Good morning, welcome to the February 11th meeting of the Board of Supervisors. We're going to be -- let it be noted that all supervisors are present. We'll be going into closed session. Madam Clerk, did you want to read the two items, please?
Item one, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation, one case pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D4.
Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, please proceed.
Item two, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation, one case pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D2.
Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, we're going to adjourn to closed session. We'll return in time for the nine o'clock start of board. We'll reconvene. Good morning, I'd like to reconvene the meeting of the Board of Supervisors. And if you can, please stand for the pledge. And afterwards, I'd like you to keep standing. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I've asked you to please continue standing. I want to have a moment of silence for John Tosconia, a former Calaveras County Supervisor. Thank you. I remember being on that side in a formal life of things I did, and John was a supervisor. He sure was intimidating.[153.62][153.62](Laughter) But he brought a lot to this county, so it's so appreciated. I'd like to move to staff announcements. If the staff has any comments they'd like to make on any item they think we should know about or not. Okay. I want to move to recognition. Oh, yeah. Thank you. We're supposed to report out on clo -- well, not we're supposed to, we report out on closed session. Madam Clerk, could you please report out? Thank you.
Reported today's closed sessions. Item one, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation, one case pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D4. There was no reportable action taken. Item two, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation, one case pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D2. There was no reportable action taken.
Thank you. I'd like to move to recognitions and acknowledgement. I have the first one, and I'd like to have Mr. Nanak come out, our Superintendent of the Office of Education.
She needs to read it.
No, can I read it?
She needs to read the --
Oh. You know what? That's why she's getting my blue ribbon, because she is trying to keep me in line. Diane, go ahead.
So, item three is from District Three. To proclaim the week of February 10th through February 15th, 2020, as Kindness Week in Calaveras County, and further deem the county as a Random Acts of Kindness Zone.
Thank you. Okay. Got it. So, the reason -- hold on a moment, why I'm getting my blue ribbon, because I already signed the back to Diane, because of what you just witnessed, she's trying to keep me on the straight and narrow as Chair of the Board. And it's a little difficult sometimes, so Diane, thank you so very much.[305.12][305.12](Applause) Yeah, and then my colleagues have to keep reminding me to talk into the microphone. Thank you. Do you want a blue ribbon too? Okay.[320.33][320.33](Laughter) I want to recognize, this is really special for me, Acts of Kindness, because I remember when the Burganses started it, and they owned Burganses Nursery, and they would give out carnations. So, those of you who've lived here a long time, remember that. And to the Burgans family, we thank them for keeping this going. Whereas National Random -- and you're wondering why he's here, he'll tell you. Whereas National Random Acts of Kindness Week will be observed February 10th through 15. And whereas Calaveras County's participated in Random Acts of Kindness since 2010, but we really started doing it unofficially when the carnations came. And whereas all who live and do work with Calaveras County are encouraged to practice Random Acts of Kindness, a tradition started in Angels Camp by the Jim Burgans family, and now therefore be it proclaimed that the Calaveras Board of Supervisors recognizes the week of February 10th through 15th to be Kindness Week throughout the county. May I have a motion by the Board to do --
Second.
Thank you. A motion by Supervisor Garamendi, a second by Supervisor Stopper. All in favor?
Can we have public comment?
Maybe. Oh, my God, I have to give everybody a blue ribbon. Oh, it's amazing.
I got lots.
You got lots? Thank you. Does anybody have anything they'd like to say on this? Will.
I'm Will Moore from Oaxaca, Calaveras, and you mentioned that this started in Angels Camp, but did that start for the whole nation in Angels Camp, or just Calaveras County?
Calaveras County. Does anyone else have anything they'd like to say, or any memory? Okay. I ask for public comment. Now, can I have your vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Passes on a 5-0 vote of the Board. So, be it further proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors declares that the county of Calaveras be deemed Random Acts of Kindness Zone during the week of February 10, and that residents, and visitors, and educators continue to observe Ripples of Kindness Project throughout 2020. And Ms. Nanak, you're representing the Burgans family. Do you want to --
Jim could not be here today. He was at a convention that he had to be at for work, but he really sends his appreciation and gratitude. You'll see the front of the building in blue. You'll see blue rubens popping up all around the county. The schools are heavily involved in this, and it's just so important today. We see the opposite side of kindness all the time, and I think we all know it's pretty obvious when we see it. And we need to go above and beyond ourselves to really support being kind. It's not about agreeing or disagreeing, it's about how we approach each other, and how we are human to each other. So, thank you all very much for the support. It means a lot to our schools. You're setting the example for our kids. Thank you.[531.66][531.66](Applause)
I'll stop. (Laughter) Okay, good job, good job. All right, thank you.
I was going to start right off the heads there.
Madam Clerk, could you continue, please?
Item four is from District Four. To proclaim the month of February 2020 as Civil Grand Jury Awareness Month in Calaveras County.
Thank you. This is a proclamation recognizing February 2020 as Civil Grand Jury Awareness Month in Calaveras County. Reads as the follows. Whereas every year in each of California's 58 counties, 19 ordinary -- I don't see them as ordinary -- citizens take an oath to voluntarily serve a term of one year as grand jurors, and whereas the grand jury system was brought to the United States with the colonialists, and the first grand jury in America was impaneled in 1635. And whereas Calaveras County, one of the original 27 counties of the state, was organized at the 1849-1850 session of the California State Legislature, and whereas the grand jury is truly an independent investigative body, operationally separate from the entities and officials they investigate, and who are officers of the court under the guidance of the Calaveras County Superior Court Presiding Judge, and whereas certain responsibilities of the grand jury are mandated by state law, and the grand jury has jurisdictional rights to investigate city and county departments, school districts, and special districts, and whereas the grand jury is composed of 19 citizens who represent the citizens of the county and making recommendations for improvements to our local government, and whereas the grand jury decides what areas of local government they are going to investigate or review during the year, one of the most important functions of the grand jury is to review the operations of officers, departments, and agencies of local government and special districts, and whereas the grand jury receives and reviews complaints from citizens within the county, and whereas the grand jury's investigative process may or may not result in reports, those fact-finding reports identify specific problems and provide specific recommendations for government improvement, and/or identify commendations, and whereas the grand jury is recognized for their dedicated service and their dedicated time volunteering to make Calaveras County governmental and special district entities more efficient for the best -- in the best interests of the community. Is there any public comment on this?
Hi, Larry Abernathy, Valley Springs. Thank you very much for this. We appreciate it. We always like to get the word out that the grand jury is active and doing good work and kind of watching government to make sure things are running as best it can be. And we have -- I guess the members, if they would stand, I guess, and I could recognize them for --[718.63][718.63](Applause) So, this group represents some of the current members and the chapter, which Carolyn is the president of. So, thank you very much for this honor.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
House of Taxpayer Association. I'd just like to express our thankfulness to the grand jury. They're probably one of the most important parts of government that we have, especially as concerning the public and the taxpayer. Thank you.
Susan Morse, Angels Camp. I just want to say on behalf of residents, all of us citizens that live here in Calaveras County, we appreciate your good work, and we count on all of you. So, thank you very much, and, you know, just thanks.
Being no further public comment, call for a motion.
So, moved.
Madam Chair, you want to call for the vote?
I just wanted to see who was getting the next blue ribbon. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So, passes on the 5-0 vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors, County of Calaveras, State of California, does hereby designate the month of February 2020 to be declared Civil Grand Jury Month in Calaveras County, and to encourage citizen participation in the grand jury process. Could those members of the grand jury that are here today, please come forward so we can get a photograph of you with you?
Please remember these ones are all volunteers.
Okay, ready? Smile! Thank you.[830.12][830.12](Applause)
I feel like that commercial where you remember the guy gets the keys to the city and emotes, and says, "It's time for us to get to work." I think that's what we need to do, because we got work to do.[834.12][834.12](Laughter) So, thank you very much.[835.12][835.12](Applause)
Public comment. Any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Board and is not posted on the consent or regular agendas, may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the Board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is completed before the 30-minute allotted time period, the Board may immediately move to the next order of business. If public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will be continued as the last item of business in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of comments to be heard.
Dr. Kaledin.
Good morning. I'm Dr. Dean Kaleda, and I'm your Health Officer for Calaveras County and have been so for the last 20 years. I wanted to give you and the community an update on the 2019 novel coronavirus outbreak. Calaveras Public Health continues to closely monitor an outbreak of a novel, which is new, coronavirus infection originally starting in Wuhan, China, and which continues to expand. The death toll worldwide has climbed to over 1,000. There have been 12 cases in the United States, primarily in travelers who have returned from China. Two cases of person-to-person transmission have occurred in the United States, which is new information from when I spoke to you last. There have been six cases in California, as well as six other states. No cases in Calaveras County or the surrounding foothill communities as of yet. Illness severity is not fully understood. The symptoms range from mild to severe. The death rate has been 11% in hospitalized patients who are admitted with novel coronavirus infection in other parts of the world. There's been no U.S. fatalities to date. What we're doing locally, we're monitoring the situation along with our state and federal partners. We're working with the local hospital and the medical community. We're sending information out to our medical providers of what to look for, especially in persons who return from China, which is a positive travel history if patients present with signs of illness, and a recent history to China, if a travel to China within the last 14 days, they need to take special precautions. What can we expect? We can expect more cases here in the United States in the next coming days, including California, and potentially here in the foothill communities. There's been increased testing capabilities, which is also new information. The testing for the novel coronavirus has only been able to be performed at the CDC laboratory in Atlanta, Georgia, so specimens have had to be sent all the way across the country from California to be tested in persons who are suspected to possibly having the disease. Now, that testing capability has been shipped out to state public health laboratories. So, in California, there are 16 places where testing for novel coronavirus can now take place, right here in our local areas. Now, I wanted just to take a second to contrast this novel coronavirus outbreak with routine influenza infection, which we see all the time. There have been some discussions in the community about, "Well, we're spending all this time talking about this coronavirus, we're wasting our time because influenza is a big problem." There's truth to the fact that influenza is a problem, but in public health, we can walk and chew gum at the same time. The CDC reports that there have been 22 million influenza infections so far this year, 210,000 flu-related hospitalizations, and 12,000 deaths, including 78 pediatric deaths so far this season. Influenza in California and here in the foothills is considered widespread. So, vaccination, getting an annual flu shot, is the most important way that people can protect themselves, and influenza vaccination is still available from your local medical providers and the public health department. Good hand hygiene, covering cough, routine activities that people can do every day to protect themselves against routine influenza is still important. Thank you.
Go ahead, if you have some more, please.
No, that's all. Just wanted to contrast that routine influenza is still a big deal, but two problems can face our community health-wise simultaneously.
Does anybody have any questions of Dr. Kaleda while he's here?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Lori White, and I live in Angels Camp. I only have three quick items I'd like to address. I kind of wish that this Acts of Kindness Week was last week, and that might have deterred somebody from stealing signs in my front yard. On Saturday night, and this has to do with campaign signs, I have a sign for Supervisor Mills in my front yard, which was stolen Saturday night. And I've lived in Calaveras County for many, many years, well, many, many years ago, and then I recently came back, and I am surprised at the amount of crime that exists in this county now, and most of that out of my opinion of a former law enforcement officer, I believe, is directly related to the marijuana situation that we had and didn't have and have, and people are trying to bring back. So, I would just like you to consider crime levels when you're talking about marijuana. And I understand candidate Fullendorf's campaign is mostly funded by marijuana-growing people, so I just need you to consider that. I'd also like to ask if item number six could be pulled from the consent agenda so that I can ask a question during that time?
Okay, we'll get to that, but yes, I'll remember your comment. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Kevin McAllister from District Five. I've got something, Diane, you would like to give this to Supervisor Stopper? Well, it's almost spring, and I guess it's time for recalls again. We've just served a recall notice to Benjamin Stopper, and I had some little notes here I wanted to read, but seems my dog ate my term paper. But don't worry, I've got extras. Mr. Stopper has violated his oath of office, and that he pledged to defend the Constitution of the United States and its laws. Mr. Stopper has voted to dissolve District Five Community Service Area, which served as a deterrent and helped public safety by removing our representation regarding the condition of our roads. So, this affects public service, and people in the service district are upset about this. He voted to -- voted, and in essence, to force the return of commercial cannabis production in the county, which is associated with increased crime, environmental damage, and decrease in property values, and also extra litigation against the county. Mr. Stopper has eliminated the representation of his constituents by failure to attend assigned committee meetings. Mr. Stopper has participated in a violation of the State Budget Act by voting to misappropriate county resources to fund the illegal cannabis program. Illegal cannabis program. Mr. Stopper had -- due to family members' employment with the county of Calaveras and a conflict of his employment with the Calaveras Water District, District Five has no voices and is not properly represented in the issues concerning labor negotiations in the county. Unfortunately, this, we don't have any alternatives. I mean, here we are again, have to face to do a recall because our elected people don't represent the interests of our district. And if you want more information, you can go to Calaveras Supervisor Recall on Facebook. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, please.
I'm Will Moore. I live in District Five, and I stand with Ben.
Good morning. Voter in District Four of Calaveras County, my name is Deana Morris. And first of all, I'd like to say thank you to the Mills Campaign Committee for reporting vandalism on some campaign signs, even though they weren't the Mills campaign signs. And I pulled the Calaveras County Sheriff's logs to see when this vandalism was reported. And based on the logs, it appears that the Mills campaign was the first one to report the vandalism on his opponent's signs, so I wanted to thank the Mills campaign people for doing that. Secondly, I have something I'd like to share with the supervisors and the public at large, and it's called the Influence Plan. So, number one, you determine a potential easy target. You get your foot in the door. Example, Calaveras County and the 2016 Urgency Ordinance. Number two, complete all the local requirements for an image of legitimacy. Okay? You file permits, you pay your fees, you comply with inspections. Number three, you pick some clean-cut, well-educated, well-spoken participants to give credibility to the effort and funnel money through them to local charities and school programs. Examples would be like 4-H County Fair, et cetera. Number four, buy the local press to promote medical marijuana and limit negative news and awareness of increased crime. Number five, push social media within participants to weaken and overwhelm any moral resistance. Well, I could tell you that part has happened and is still happening. Number six, quietly intimidate the resistance. Examples, follow them, engage in conversations, ask questions like, "Don't you live on such-and-such road?" Been there, too. Start a fear campaign in remote areas. Example, intimidation gunfire, verbal and nonverbal threats, retaliations, epithets, derogatory comments, assault, impeding, or blocking movement on public roads. Been there, too. And this list goes on, and it says, run a pro pot candidate against the resistant opposition. Examples would be the attempted recalls on Supervisor Mills in Toffanelli. Anyway, long story short, it says, complete takeover of the county without locals ever noticing until it's too late. This was written by an anonymous Calaveras resident and former cartel member. Thank you.
Good morning, Board. My name is Ann Hill. I guess you can hear me. The residents who use the Wilsieville Transfer Station, they have issues. They're being limited to four bags to be able to dump, and it doesn't matter whether I'm Will Moore. I live in District Five, and I stand with Ben.
Voter in District Four of Calaveras County, my name is Gina Morris. And first of all, I'd like to say thank you to the Mills Campaign Committee for reporting vandalism on some campaign signs, even though they weren't the Mills campaign signs. And I pulled the Calaveras County Sheriff's logs to see when this vandalism was reported. And based on the logs, it appears that the Mills Campaign was the first one to report the vandalism on his opponent's signs. So I wanted to thank the Mills Campaign people for doing that. Secondly, I have something I'd like to share with the supervisors and the public at large, and it's called the Influence Plan. So number one, you determine a potential easy target, you get your foot in the door. Example, Calaveras County and the 2016 Urgency Ordinance. Number two, complete all the local requirements for an image of legitimacy. Okay, you file permits, you pay your fees, you comply with inspections. Number three, you pick some clean-cut, well-educated, well-spoken participants to give credibility to the effort and funnel money through them to local charities and school programs. Examples would be like 4-H County Fair, et cetera. Number four, buy the local press to promote medical marijuana and limit negative news and awareness of increased crime. Number five, push social media within participants to weaken and overwhelm any moral resistance. Well, I could tell you that part has happened and is still happening. Number six, quietly intimidate the resistance. Examples, follow them, engage in conversations, ask questions like, "Don't you live on such-and-such road?" Been there, too. Start a fear campaign in remote areas. Example, intimidation gunfire, verbal and nonverbal threats, retaliations, epithets, derogatory comments, assault, impeding, or blocking movement on public roads. Been there, too. And this list goes on, and it says, "Run a pro pot candidate against the resistant opposition." Examples would be the attempted recalls on Supervisor Mills in Toffanelli. Anyway, long story short, it says, "Complete takeover of the county without locals ever noticing until it's too late." This was written by an anonymous Calaveras resident and former cartel member. Thank you.
Good morning, Board. My name is Ann Hill. I guess you can hear me. The residents who use the Wilsieville Transfer Station, they have issues. They're being limited to four bags to be able to dump, and it doesn't matter whether they're the 13-gallons or 39-gallon bags. They say there's a weight limit, but there's no scales to weigh the rubbish that they're going to dump. One particular case I wanted to speak of, and it's two older people that live together. They're married in a house, and they're the only, they're sole members of the house. And their receptacle in the kitchen holds 13-gallon bags. He goes to the dump every two weeks. He takes eight bags and has been doing this for a long, long time. He's now told he can only dump four bags, and/or he was told he can buy the large black bags, put four each of the 13-gallon bags into the black bags, and then he can dump Then he, you know, then he can dump them. He says that the bags are too heavy to lift by himself. So then he has to take his wife so they lift them together. He should be able to dispose of their trash the way it works for their own household. The black bags are an added expense, and then it doubles the amount of plastic in the landfill. Other transfer stations don't have these ridiculous rules. Also, they have a no toy rule. You can't dump toys in the garbage. Hmm, dumb. When dumping yard clippings, et cetera, like branches or whatnot, you can do that up there. They want cash only, and they will not give to people that mentioned to me that they cannot get a receipt out of the dump station. There's no accountability for this money. The residents who write a check are very firmly discouraged. They get kind of chastised for writing a check. So the residents feel the money is being pocketed by the workers, so where is the accountability in that transfer station? Dumping will occur on the roadsides. They mentioned two different roads. I don't know the roads up there, but two roads were mentioned, that there are now dump sites on the roads from the people. How much does the county spend on removing the roadside trash? No one has the right to tell anyone else what bags they have to buy in order to dump their own trash. This transfer station needs to be looked into. They need an audit at that transfer station. Thank you.
Thank you.
And also, Regarza, signs are also being taken out.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. Gina Gonzalez, District Four. And it is an ugly race, unfortunately. It breaks my heart what's happening. It's not right. It's not kind, like we're supposed to be kind to each other, even if we're on opposite sides of the world. This was sent to me in my mailbox. It's for Amanda, and I wanted to read you something that the public should know is not true as far as voting, where you can vote. It says, "Dear District Four voter, a friendly reminder, in 2020, the voting procedure changed to mail-in only." Exclamation point. That is not true, and that needs to be changed. The elections office, I'm going to call them and tell them, this is not right. People are now mailing in their ballot. I found out through someone who's running in the campaign that they went door-to-door and had signatures taken, and guess what? 60-plus of them were thrown out because they don't match. There's three points to a signature verification, from what I understand, and those three points didn't match because they signed on the DMV square, and people need to understand that. They need to re-register to vote and do it accurately in a form, because this kind of stuff will scare an 80- or 90-year-old person, or even a 50-year-old person that doesn't know any better. This is not a mail-in vote. This can be hand-done at the elections office, or if you're in District Four, like I am, at Mark Twain Elementary School. People need to be aware of that, and I just wanted to make that public service announcement. Thank you.
House of Congress, Taxpayer Association. We can't be involved with supporting or opposing candidates because of our structure, we're non-political. So it gets kind of difficult when you have issues that also seem to define candidates from where their philosophy lies. And so when that occurs, we just try to stick with the issue that is, and pretend it's non-political. In the case of cannabis, we found that the drug war is the primary cause of the black market. The same held true with the prohibition of alcohol. And I drink, well, I drink red wine, but now I'm drinking less. But I think that if there were an effort to ban red wine, I would see that, that, that's, even though, if you overconsume wine, you're going to have bad consequences, and I assume the same is true with marijuana and other hurtful drugs. But the point is that if we are to live in a free society, any ban will create a black market. Black market will automatically create crime. Crime hurts people. And the people that object to the different substances, like marijuana, are basing their objections to the horrible things that occur in the black market. People are abusing their neighbors in the black market. They're using intimidation and other things that are hurtful. So if you want to increase the black market, go ahead and restrict the supply of something people want to have. Now, on a positive note, we need to vote no on the tax increase on our ballot coming up. There's some things that are not mentioned. One is, there's about $1 billion in administrative money that's taken off the top, and then what remains is siphoned away with only about 40% going to the schools with no guarantee of even that. It's a bad law. Don't pass it. Thank you for your time and attention.
Susan Morris, Angels Camp. One of the things that I do is I've been involved statewide with the Election Integrity Project of California, and am familiar with the vote center model that we have here in Calaveras County, and I just wanted to expand on what Gina had said about voting in a vote center. We're going to have four vote centers, as I'm sure you all know, in Calaveras County, one in Angels Camp, one in McQualeme Hill, and one in Valley Springs, and at the government center here. One of the things that you can do, this, I didn't notice this on this deal before, but we don't only have vote-by-mail voting. Any voter can go into one of those four vote centers and request to vote in person. And you're eligible voter, you're properly registered, they will print out a ballot, and you can vote that ballot in person in all four vote centers. That's it. Thank you.
Well, I'm from another county, so I want to say how lucky you are to have Doug Oliver. I was really happy to see him today, and it seems to me you're-
So I guess you're from Toolumee.
Yes. Don't hold that against me. Seems to me your registrar voter should have been here during staff announcements and corrected some of that information that's going out to your county. I want to say something nice. I really appreciate coming over to Calaveras County and going to their health fair. I love your health fair compared to another county's. And I really appreciate seeing how many recycling cans are around town combined with your trash cans, and the fact that on all of your big recycling bins at the businesses, it's clearly labeled what can go in there and what count, and what cannot. So I just think that's really admirable, and I salute you for that, and I feel for you. I know how hard it is to sit up there and be a supervisor. I've been coming to supervisor meetings for a long time, and I've been to some of yours when you used to sit over there, and Debbie Ponte was chair, and then Cliff Edsall was chair. And you deserve a little credit for having the guts to sit up there. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Good morning. Regarza, District Two. I'm going to do my first random act of kindness. I'm returning your sign to you, Jack. About a week and a half ago, this turned up in my driveway. You do not have permission to put your sign in my driveway. There it is. I also received in the mail some literature from Jack, and I read it, and I looked at it, and I went over the whole thing, and it's just fluff. It says nothing. It's a bunch of fluff. So I'm thinking Nancy Pelosi wrote this. I'd like to bring up a couple things on this. You said that you supported the Butte Fire survivors. How? How did you support them? You voted to increase the building fees on the Butte Fire survivors. I know so many people who lost everything, four years later, either they moved away because they're not able to rebuild, or they're still pulling red tape. You said also on this about your strategic planning, economic planning, and policy development. Jack, you voted no on that, along with Olivera. So how you say you supported them, I don't know. The second thing is, I see on here where you said, "Today, our communities are safer because we have increased funding for the sheriff's office." I'm wondering how they're safer. There's theft, there's shootings, there's murders, there's human trafficking. Before marijuana was brought to our community, we didn't have those issues. There was an occasional theft, but not like there is today. Is that funny? You're laughing. Okay. Next, let's see, what else do I got? Advocate to state of California to protect property rights of landowners and the rural character of our county. You have done nothing to protect our land rights. We are now surrounded by commercial agricultural businesses in our rural neighborhood. Now people can't even enjoy their acreage because of this. So there's another fluff. You secured funding. An advocate for healthy forests and watersheds to protect our communities from fire. I have seen a letter from Clyde Clapp that went to Ebhamud. Funny? Okay. I've also seen Dennis Mills Silent Poison. Where's your letter, Jack?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So let's talk about structural deficits. Structural deficits, as we can all agree upon, are when the spending for the county is more than the regular revenue from taxes. So when we say things like, "Structural deficits aren't a problem." Why would we be doing extra work on a gazebo and things like that? It's like saying, "I have a mortgage for a house, and I have to eat," and all these things. Those are my regular expenses. If my mortgage and my expenses to eat are more than what I'm bringing in from my income from my job, I have a problem. The taxes in this county are like our income from our job. If we're not making enough money to pay for our expenses, we have a problem. Just because I go out and I'm not able to pay my mortgage, and then I go and spend on more frivolous things, like, you know, I get rims for my car on credit, I go, you know, get tints for my windows, that doesn't mean that we don't have a problem. In fact, spending on more things like gazebos and other frivolous things, what I would consider frivolous, does not mean we don't have a problem. It means we have a bigger problem. That's all I want to say.
And time for one more speaker?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. What I am about to say is, they are my thoughts and my thoughts only, my words and my words I was saddened when you decided to go back to regulating marijuana. One reason was it definitely showed how naive you are about the criminal mind. Our sheriff stood up here and testified that under the UO, crime was at an increase. Our DA stood up here and testified that under the UO, there were 11 marijuana-related murders. And the one that sticks in my mind the most is a mother who killed her son over the business and wrapped him up and left him in a ditch. But I think U.S. Attorney General McGregor Scott said it best at a press conference for the El Dorado deputy that was murdered by a black-market grower. He said, "Since California chose regulation, the black market is well-enthriving here." And that is what I mean by being naive about the criminal mind. The criminal mind, the black market, wants you to regulate. It gives them more places to hide and grow." Thank you.
Thank you. Can you want a close public comment? If there's any other people who wish to speak on public comment, we will take that at the end of the board meeting. We'll move to consent agenda. Madam-
Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the board at one time without discussion. Any board member, staff member, or interested party may request removal of an item from the consent agenda for later discussion.
Okay, we've already had a request for item six to be removed. Any other items?
Good morning, Board. Andrea Treblefield, Health and Human Services. I am withdrawing item 14, and we will bring it back at a later date. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any from the supervisors?
Madam Chair, I'd have item 11 and item 17.
Anyone else? All right. Could we have a motion on the balance of the consent, please?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second? Motion by Supervisor Toffanelli, second by Supervisor Guaramendi. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Moves on five-o vote. Item six, which is animal services.
If you can just give me one moment. Item six is from Animal Services. "To authorize the board chair to sign professional services agreement with Angels Camp Veterinary Hospital to provide veterinary care for the Animal Services Department during the period January 23, 2020 through January 22, 2023, in an amount not to exceed $100,000 per year."
And what was the question, please? Could you come up? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. The question is just simply because I have not been here, and I just saw this on the consent agenda, and I wanted to ask a couple of questions. $100,000 a year is a lot of money. Has this project gone out to bid to any other vets? And have we considered having our own vet as an employee rather than going out to a veterinarian hospital? So those are just the two questions. If they could clarify for me, I would feel much better.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I didn't hear the first question, but-
The first question is, did we go out to bid? $100,000 seems like a lot of money.
The bid went out approximately three years ago in Angels Camp- The bid went out approximately three years ago in Angels Camp. From my understanding, was the only vet at that time. It was originally $50,000. We're asking for $100,000 because in certain cases of cruelty, horses or bulldog case in previous years, Animal Services surpasses that $50,000 mark. And I did not hear the second question.
Okay, and the second question is, have we considered hiring our own veterinarian versus utilizing outside that?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you. That might be something you'd like to consider.
Definitely. Yes, ma'am.
If we could even find one. Thank you. Okay, move to item... Oh, that's right. Lord love a duck. I must not be drinking my coffee enough. Thank you all for helping me. Is there any public... God, before this meeting's over, I'm going to have them all over me. Is there any public comment on this item? Bring it back to the board. Any discussion the board might wish to have?
I'll move this item, Madam Chair.
Second.
Go ahead.
Okay, second by Supervisor Stopper. Motion by Supervisor Toffanelli. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes on a five oh vote. Thank you. Thank you. Move to item number 11.
Item 11 is from Public Works to initiate a proceeding to vacate Telegraph Road and Telegraph Court at Highway four near the Stanislaus County line and scheduling a public hearing on March 24, 2020 to approve a resolution to vacate Telegraph Road and Telegraph Court.
Mr. Mills, this was yours. Your question, please.
Yes. I received multiple calls last night, Josh, so I apologize not being able to get in contact with you in advance because it seems that the other property owners that would be affected by this decision were not contacted, were not aware of it, and to some degree, one of them would object. So I would prefer that the applicant take the time to contact his neighbors and determine whether or not this is something that they would all agree to in advance. I'll give you an example of that is when the old Highway four was abandoned between Horseshoe Drive and what is now Little John Road, there was one parcel in there with a home that potentially became landlocked to some degree. We have literally about a dozen locks on Church Springs Road, which takes off from Telegraph. And if we deem, or they deemed at some point to put up gates and locks, et cetera, without discussing it with all of the affected property owners, this could be something that could lead to some real discord over time. So I would want to be sure that all of those, primarily those property owners that are listed here, besides Mr. Borba, are contacted and had a discussion with them in advance because it may turn out that we don't have the political will to want to do this because the rest of the owners don't agree. So I'm just trying to get that point across before we step into a hearing.
Yeah, and let me respond to that Supervisor Mills. And again, I'm Joshua Pack. I'm your Director of Public Works. So as far as I'm aware, as part of this outreach, before we bring this to you to begin this process, we do reach out to the property owners on record, the ones with property owners fronting these parcels. From what I've been told, from my staff, is that we had unanimous support through a petition process, that they have supported it. That doesn't necessarily mean that someone was missed. It's quite possible someone was missed, or it's quite possible that someone has legal rights that we're unaware of. But this is a discussion. This is the kickoff of a process that allows us to go through law. And there's a very detailed process when you abandon roads. It involves a minimum public noticing process, involves a public hearing here at this body. These items are brought up. We haven't received any complaints. It's unfortunate that the folks who may have been bypassed didn't reach out to us because we're unaware of any conflicts. This wasn't done, you know, trying to appease one property owner and the other. This was done with what we thought was covering all our bases. So, you know, the board could certainly have the discretion to remove this and bring it back at a later date. But with that citing, this is not an approval of an abandonment. It's a first step of a process. We've reached out to planning as part of this. Peter Mauer Planning has given a tentative approval. We've reached out to the utility partners who have potential claims on this. They've given us approval. So we have done a lot of work on this. If there is someone we've met that we haven't included in that, it's not through an error of malice, it's through an error of simple, just a mistake. But, you know, like I said, ultimately, the board does have that discretion. I would encourage to continue with the process, but, and obviously, if folks continue to have that, and we can work, you know, in tandem with those folks as this process goes forward to determine what their legal rights or claims are. And the other thing, too, is just because they may or may not have a legal right doesn't not necessarily mean that that road still doesn't provide some sort of regional or importance. We look at each, every road. It doesn't happen very often. The abandonment of a road happens pretty rarely. When we look at abandonment, we look at its regional accessibility. Does it provide regional access? Does it provide small localized access? Does that road provide, by taking that action, does that diminish someone's rights? Those all come into effect. So, like I said, you have a couple of different options. We could certainly reach out to folks and try to bring this back at a later date, or we can move forward, continue working with them as well, and to determine if those rights, if they do have legal rights to that. And even if they don't have legal rights, they absolutely still have an opportunity to provide comments and feedback as part of the public comment.
Mr. Pack, Mr. Wagner, who has parcels H, I, J, and K, was not aware of this. He really, he didn't know one way or the other. He needed to know more.
Okay.
Mr. Murphy was surprised with this because he hadn't been talked to. He's parcel L.
Okay.
And Mr. Candy. So it's like the only person that's really in this discussion right now is Mr. Borba. And it's unfortunate if we've taken this much effort and the parcel owners that would be affected haven't had some initial discussion to determine whether or not this is something of any value to them.
Yeah, and you know, if that's the case, and I apologize to this board, I was under the impression that each of these folks have been discussed with whether... Now, we do reach out to the primary property owner, whoever's on record. So if those are those people and those haven't... What I would recommend right now, if there is some discretion, let's remove that item and then let my staff reach out to these folks, let me verify that, and then I can work with you directly to potentially reschedule this at a later date. Again, it's not my impression. We're not trying to pit property owner against property owner. We want to make sure, and it's part of that process, was there was supposed to be a process to reach out to those. What I was told, and from my recollection and understanding, is that there is universal support. But if that's not the case, let's pull it back, let's go back and reach out again, and then we can reschedule it at a later date.
I would appreciate pulling it back and having the opportunity to talk with the other property owners because their feedback to me is that this is a surprise.
Okay.
And it isn't that they would object, but I want to be sure that they, there is some respect given for their position in this.
Absolutely.
And then only after they've had that conversation, their ability to get their input in it, move it forward or stop it depending upon where the property owners feel. We do have, for instance, Nancy Whittle does lease some of the property in that area, and I don't want to create difficulty with adjacent property owners by putting up gates that may create problems.
Yeah. Understood. Thank you.
Would you be willing to withdraw the item for today?
Yeah, I would. At the discretion, at the direction of the board, I'd be happy to remove this item and bring it back at a later date after we've had these issues. I'd be fine with that.
Okay, thank you. Let me ask for public comment first. Is there any public comment on this item?
House of Gallant Taxpayer Association, and also Real Estate Broker. One of the things that, one of the blessings we have in property rights is we have a right to access to our property. If it's not dedicated easement, then it's a prescriptive easement. So one of the things that would be of consideration, if any of these property owners need to use this right away to access their property, that easement be identified as a prescriptive easement. And we understand and we appreciate our Director of Public Works in trying to clean up some of the roads that are really not, do not need to be public roads anymore. So we concur with the idea of postponing this item or not considering the item at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scala. Any other public comment on this item?
Susan Morris, Angels Camp. I didn't know anything about this, but I think the bottom line here is, and I see this in other actions, too, that happen, is the issue here is notice to the people. So that's the bottom line. So I would hope that this county and the supervisors would always be cognizant of the fact is, whatever action they take, please give the people notice. And I think that's what the issue is here, is people didn't have a right, have a chance to respond. Thanks.
If there's no further public comment, Supervisor Mills, your pleasure.
My request is to have this item pulled and bring it back after we've had our Public Works an opportunity to converse with all of the affected property owners. Pardon me?
Okay, thank you. Pardon?
We don't need any more.
No.
Yeah.
Okay, then we're done. Thank you.
All right. To item 14 has been withdrawn. Item 17, Supervisor Mills.
Item 17 is from Human Services to authorize the board chair to sign Amendment Two to the agreement with Amador Calaveras Counseling Services, increasing the not-to-exceed amount to $90,000 for the provision of specialty counseling services.
Your question, Supervisor?
Yeah, just probably more of a cleanup than anything on page 390 of our agenda packet. The agreement term is through June 30 of 2019, and yet the discussion summary is stating it's through June 30, 2020. So I'm not certain which applies here. In the financing, it says during the period through June 30 of 2020.
So what happened was, is the contract, he was serving our families, and so the service that he provided exceeded his existing contract that went back to 2019. So I think that's the language issue.
Okay. I was just a little confused as to why I saw those two dates were different.
Yeah.
Okay, appreciate your explanation.
Any comment on this from the public? Supervisor Mills?
I'll move the item, ma'am.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Mills, second by Supervisor Toffanelli. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes five oh. Thank you. Let's move to the regular agenda.
Item 27 is from the Department of Emergency Services. Receive a tree mortality implementation update from TSS Consultants.
And do you, John, do you need a minute?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we'll take a five-minute recess. I'd like to move to the regular agenda. Item 27.
So again, this is from the Office of Emergency Services to receive a tree mortality program implementation update from TSS Consultants.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Supervisors. I'm John Osborne. I'm your OES Director. With me today is Tad Mason. He is our contracted licensed professional forester, and we will provide you guys with an update regarding the tree mortality program. Tad?
This is our first quarterly update of the year. Every quarter, we come back to provide a summary of our accomplishments. I've got a short slide deck to go through here. I'm absolutely open to field questions as we go along. This program has been underway since October of 2017. Since that time, we've removed about 7,400 trees across 23 projects. All the projects have been completed without any injuries or issues with crews or any significant damage to public roads or fences or other infrastructure. As part of our tree mortality program, we have an active outreach program that includes a tree mortality website, notifications to property owners when projects are about to begin, monthly press releases that are basically written in conjunction with the director and TSS.
Could you hold?
Oh, my background music. There we go. Okay. Good.
Thank you.
Now we're logging. Good. So we have an active outreach program. The whole objective here is to engage the neighborhoods that we're working in so there's no surprises as we deploy equipment and staff to get the job done. The, one of the more challenging parts to this project, though, is getting landowners to respond to our inquiries. If we find dead trees on a property, a write-of-entry form is mailed to that property owner. We have mailed out 3,000 ROEs, and about 72% have returned signed ROE forms. We have about 700 still outstanding with dead trees on those properties, and we'll continue to conduct outreach to get those returned so we can take those trees out. Okay, looking to the future, next slide, there we go. We've been working with the University of California Extension Service and the U.S. Forest Service to monitor tree mortality here in the central Sierra. While we know the issues with the front country and the ponderosa pine, we are starting to see additional mortality in the higher elevations in the fir. This is not surprising. This is a standard drought mortality insect kill consequence, and some would say it's due to climate change, some would say it's just pure episodic drought. But in any case, we are seeing additional mortality still out there on the landscape, and we'll continue to address that. In addition to climate change and drought, stand density is a huge issue. We know that we have overstocked forests from successful decades and decades of fire suppression. The good news is the state has allocated $1 billion to CAL FIRE to expend over five years, that's $200 million a year, to conduct landscape-level fuels reduction. And this is, this is year two of that project, so we're hoping to see some real changes in the landscape-level approach to fuels treatment to mitigate welfare behavior. As we know, it can be extreme. As far as long-term effects of this tree mortality episode, one of the things we are seeing are vegetation type changes. In other words, the ponderosa pine type, when we have such high mortality due to vegetation succession, we're seeing it come in with oak and shrub. Hopefully, this is just a successional change, and we'll eventually go back to ponderosa pine. But that is a concern, vegetation type change. Next slide. Okay, ongoing projects. I'm going to go through a list of seven projects that we have in play right now. First up is Project 25, which is on the Highway four corridor between Arnold and Murphy's. 234 trees to be removed. Joe's Logging is the contractor that was selected low-price bid to do the work. This project is almost wrapped up, going well, no issues. Weather delays have not been significant. As we know, the weather lately has been unfortunately unseasonably warm and precipitation-free. Project nine is the BLM parcels in the West Point area. This has been 18 months of interaction with that agency, very challenging. Fortunately, we've finally been able to pull the trigger, secured a permit from BLM, and a total of 376 trees are targeted for removal. Joe's Logging, again, was the low-price leader to implement this project, and it's going well. going well. The Director and I are heading out to that project here following our presentation. Project 27, West Point-Wilseyville-Glenco Railroad Flat, 186 trees selected for removal. Joe's Logging is the contractor, again, low-price bidder, and Joe will be out there doing the work once Project 25 wraps up. He'll go right to 27. Next slide. Okay. Project 26 is up in the high country, Sky High Ranch to the county line, 236 trees. Right now, part of this is under snow, but it's starting to clear up, and we may be implementing this here, Project 26, soon.
It's going to snow.
Supervisor Callaway is a skier, ever optimistic. Good for you. Project 28 is our next set of projects on U.S. Forest Service land, primarily in the Sky High Ranch-Tamrac area, 115 trees. The bid package is out on the street right now. We're expecting a bid February 19th. Project 22 is additional BLM parcels outside of the Butte Fire. This is a big project, 509 trees, and it also is out on the street, and we expect a bid back on February 19th.
Tad?
Yes.
Where is Project 22? Is that more or less?
Wilseyville area. Yeah.
Those are, Project 22 is the second of the BLM projects.
Yeah.
And is a schmattering of the smaller BLM parcels up in that area.
There is. There is. And we're pleased to get after it. We can tell you, we're getting phone calls from Skull Flat Road area, especially during high-wind events.
Actually, got a compliment out of her the other day.
We did.
John shared that with you.
Yes.
We don't get many, so that's a good one.
Thank you. Yeah, we're pleased to get those. Okay. Ongoing, two more projects we're looking at. These are being marked as we speak. Highway 4 corridor, Project 29. And then Project 30 is Big Trees Village. Again, our foresters are out there surveying and marking trees as we speak. Okay. Any questions on the projects? All right. Just a couple of quick slides. We had some real challenges, I mentioned, with BLM in the West Point area, and it's, the wind events have been catastrophic and really caused significant damages, as you can see with this picture. That's Joe of Joe's Logging, right in the middle of the stand. But it is really tough to clean up after Mother Nature has had her way. Next slide. Also, some of the phone calls we receive, the complaints occasionally we receive from landowners, 95% of the time, it's PG&E crews not cleaning up behind themselves. These are examples of slashing the ditches, which is a problem in the winter, as we know. They'll plug culverts, or just slash left on property, on the right, on property owners' land. And we've been conducting some significant outreach, primarily the Director, successfully, and we have seen a sea change in what PG&E is doing out there. So hats off to your outreach, John. Clearly, you've had an impact.
Thank you. And actually, that's with your support. Last year, we directed a letter to the President of PG&E. Also, through our single point of contact, we've worked well with Dylan at PG&E. And then, in the last couple of weeks, we met with a senior vice president who provided direction to Dylan to ensure that we had the PG&E resources that he needed to correct this problem. And within about a week's time of that, we actually sent our foresters out to survey that in anticipation of meeting with PG&E, to show them the fuel loading that they were leaving behind. And during our re-survey of that, actually going through the spots we wanted to show PG&E, they had returned and cleaned up that, many of those sites.
I'd like to make a note that there's been some substantial clearing under main power lines in the Vallecito area. For instance, they've dropped trees and left them along the roadside, right on Vallecito, or on Angels Road. I would trust that they follow up with getting that off of the county easement as quickly as possible.
Yes. And we, through our foresters in this program, kind of have boots on the ground and eyes in the field for when that type of stuff happening. As you see, our forester taking notes to send someone by there and ensure that it does, in fact, get removed.
I'll send you a note.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. And we welcome that. Our conversation with PG&E surrounded the idea that, as their utility provider, that we are very appreciative, that they are removing more vegetation from those lines that make those lines safer, but that they also needed to be good neighbors to our communities and to the county, and at a minimally, leaving those sites as they found them, or if not better.
Thank you. Next is our last slide, and what this is, is a summary of the statewide effort across 10 counties, just an accounting of a project to date through the end of 2019. There's been 103 damage survey reports submitted to the state for reimbursement, a total of almost 60,000 trees removed, with, and I want to call your attention to the cost per tree, with an average cost per tree of $449. Our average cost per tree here in Calaveras is $450. So we're right on with the average for the state. Total expended is approaching $20 million of CAL OES funding. So that's it for my presentation. Questions?
A note regarding the funding. You folks were kind enough last fall to allocate us $300,000 of PG&E disaster funds to continue this program. And what you're seeing here in this slide is the other $3 that the state spends. So for every dollar of that 300 we spend, we send a claim to the state for $3, and that's how we are able to continue funding this project. And you'll notice in the 1920 bracket there, there were 16 DSARS, and I'm thinking four or five of those, I kind of lose count of them, belong to us. As a program as a whole with the tree mortality, there were a total of 10 counties that were allocated, in addition to the CDAA funding you see, the CAL FIRE tree mortality, local assistance tree mortality program funds. Of those 10, five counties expended their entire grant. We were one of them. And there will be an additional, I believe it's 1.1, 1.2 million dollars that is left over in that program that we anticipate will be brought back up with, it was in the Governor's January budget, and we hope that it stays there. And we hope through Tad and his crew's good work, that we will be competitive for some more of those dollars, and be able to use some CAL FIRE money.
Effective July 1.
Board members?
Thank you. Thank you very much. You know, it took a little while for us to get going, but I think we're definitely got momentum right now. And I know in dealing with other counties, I'm very proud of the progress that we're making. And I've told them all that the money that they haven't spent from CAL FIRE, we want. Would it be of any use for this board to write a letter? Because we've got, you know, they've got this money sitting out there, CAL FIRE does, that has not been spent. We've got chainsaws already hot and ready to go, and we've got projects ready to go. Is there anything that we can do to get CAL FIRE to give us that money, so we keep that pump primed? I mean, we've got things worked, and we do not want to lose momentum. And I actually, I suggested something like that to CAL FIRE chief, but is there anything? Yeah, he was at a meeting.
And his response was?
His response was, "Oh."
Oh.
So that's noncommittal.
So I concur. I think correspondence on your letterhead would be powerful, and would help our efforts here. Right now, it would be effective July 1, because that's how we know the state budget works.
But we need it now.
It'd be nice to ramp that up, but.
We need the money today. I mean, we've got hot saws, and we've got people moving.
We do. And logs moving. Yes.
Maybe they can loan it to us. Well, if you have an idea, I would bring it to the Chair.
Madam Chair, we could certainly bring back a letter for consideration for you folks, and if you chose to sign that, we would be happy to send it along.
Does the board have any problem with doing that?
I think we need to reiterate a sense of urgency in that letter.
Okay. Yes. Do it.
It will be done. And again, in the interim, thanks to you guys allocating that PG&E disaster fund money, we, our saws are hot, our pump is primed, and unfortunately, the upside of a very mild winter is that we have been able to continue to be out in the woods, working and taking these dead trees and these dying trees out prior to the upcoming fire season. So you guys are the folks that have kept that saw hot and the pump primed for us at this point.
What a silver-tongued devil. But, I'm sorry. Supervisor Mills?
I can keep talking without snickering. That's good. Mr. Mason, you talked about landscape level. I know that in attending meetings with the Fire Safe Council, there's been extensive work done with LiDAR, and doing some overlays, trying to kind of get through the barriers of the forest to determine where is the densest fuel loading, and what sections do we need to take out, and then subsequent costs. Is that something that we may want to incorporate into the future, since the technology is already there, being able to do that rather than go boots on the ground?
Right. LiDAR is a powerful technology that's extremely helpful in conducting inventory of standing trees and shrubs. It is expensive, and I'm hoping at some point that the state will initiate that survey on a hazard area by hazard area basis. From the work that we've done here at TSS, we just know that it takes a special flight, if you will, a dedicated fixed-wing aircraft to pull that off, and it is a little spendy.
It's my understanding, those flights have already been done through Calaveras County? So it's just a matter of getting the information from the state. How current it is is the question.
It's my understanding it's PG&E that was doing the LiDAR survey. Do you have other?
No, we had, yeah, we had some through the state as well. So I would like to coordinate with you about getting that information, if it's helpful.
Okay. So just so I'm clear, Supervisor Mills, you're saying that the state has conducted LiDAR inventory?
Yes.
We were not aware of that.
And part of it's through Water Resources.
Part of what?
Water Resources Board.
Okay. Through the Water Resources Board.
Yeah. It's through, because of the 50 gallon per person per day thing that.
Sure.
That's how they started it.
Right. The upland watersheds are a real concern for.
Correct. So that's the.
Water Resources.
I'll coordinate with you on it.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. I'm sure Supervisor Germandy's on it, but the BLM land, we are paying for the project on, like, Project 9?
We are not. So that is coming through two sources of funding. The first source is the CDAA funding, that's the California Disaster Assistance Act. So that's the 75%, the $3. And our, we would owe 25% of the tag, and BLM awarded us, if you guys recall, late last, or early last fall.
Yeah.
The $88,000.
Right.
And we will use that BLM grant to pick up the tab on our 25%.
So, Mr. Germandy, we have it on one of our federal policies to have, may have worked with getting funding, and this is still a priority. I'm, sort of wasn't clear who's paying for what, and where the money's coming from.
I think, you know, we've had a good, we have had our challenges with BLM, but a lot of that was due to really the lack of personnel that they had. As this board's aware, last year, I went back to Washington, D.C. with our lobbyist, Mia. We met with BLM. We talked about the needs, subsequent, and really told them that one of the constraints for our projects were their lack of personnel in their offices, and particular archaeologists were jamming everything up. So after that, we met, I went with the State Director, and the State Director has come up and toured our projects. They've made hires in our field office. We have a good relationship. They're just, in 25 years of public service, I've never seen an organization have to cover so much, kind of with so little bodies. So I am sympathetic to them, but I think we've turned a corner, and they gave us a grant, and I think we've got a new day working with them. You know, it's never going to be easy, but I think we're moving forward.
And hopefully, on that horizon for us as a county, being in the foothill area where wildfire is prevalent, and the Wui, the wildland urban interface lives and breathes, we hope that we'll be able to maybe get to a point with BLM and that relationship to sign a good neighbor agreement, which would be a multi-year program where they assisted us with fuels projects, or, you know, various different types of forest management that could be helpful to us in mitigating fuel load and things along those.
And BLM's partnering with us in addition to tree mortality. They're partnering with us on a lot of fire breaks we're putting in, going up, going up to 26. So, you know, we're working a lot with them. It's not just the county, but our volunteers, CAL FIRE. BLM is spending a lot of time here, and as I told the State Director, we want to be your poster child for cooperation and getting things done, and I think we're, I think we're doing a lot better than everybody else right now.
The other one I have is on tree markings.
Yes.
It's become a huge issue in the Ebbets Pass corridor with PG&E going in and marking trees and continuing to mark. Is there, will the community know the difference between the tree mortality markings and the PG&E markings?
We hope so. Each tree that we mark has a CC, as in Calaveras County, so that should be helpful. One of our challenges is this year, PG&E decided to use white tree paint, and which tree paint are we using? White. And PG&E knew that, but they went ahead, and they've been marking with white as well. So we're having to work through that. We are coordinating closely, though, with PG&E, so that they're removing their trees, and we are removing our trees.
And thank you for having them clean up their slash, because that's been a huge problem, at least in the Ebbets Pass corridor.
And it's been a huge, it's been a drain on our resources, on our county resources, because generally, how those complaints come in, they start over in Director Pax's office as a complaint for a plug drain. And then, when you get to the body of it, you're reading that it's slash or debris from tree felling. Then it comes over to our office. We need to research the area to see if we were working in the area, and if we had a tree nearby. And 90% or 95% of the time, it's not our operation. One of the things that we do through this program is use local companies that are invested in our community, and they do a really good job of making sure that they leave the place at least as good as they found it, hopefully with a little less fuel load. So that process for each complaint is a drain on Josh's staff, as well as ours, as well as our TMP program, to eliminate that it was us. And we do that literally, hmm, probably once or twice a month to do that. A note about the tree marking. We actually geolocate each and every tree that we mark, so we know exactly where that tree is, and we report those GPS coordinates when we follow it, so we know exactly where the tree is. we follow it. So we know exactly where the tree is, when we fell it, and its disposition, whether we are forced to leave it because of safety concerns, we were unable to safely remove it, or if we do remove it, what happens, or if the property in our request that it be left, then we track that for each and every one of those 7,400 trees.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions from the board, Mr. Mills?
Well, just to make a point about BLM and the level of cooperation, as you are well aware, BLM has now allowed grazing permits around New Maloney's for the first time in 25 years. That was accomplished last September, and it serves two purposes: fuel reduction for those ranchers that are adjacent to it, not only in Calaveras but in Tooluma County, but star thistle problems. As you can get cattle on that land, you can keep the star thistle down. So it's serving dual purposes, and they are more than willing to cooperate with us where those locations exist. If there's other property that needs grazing permits, I'll certainly be willing to work with whoever to get that accomplished, now that I know how to wade through that bureaucracy to make it happen. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the public on this item? Please come up. Thank you.
There are some people in our community who are not going to like what I'm going to say.
Could you speak into the mic, sir, so we can all hear you?
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
This problem didn't start yesterday. You're all experts, and I applaud the things you do. Tree felling is a dangerous job. And, but who's guilty? PG&E get all the blame because it's their wires going through everybody's land that causes fires. The county is to blame because what have we done to keep this in order over the last, I'm going to say, 30 years that I've lived in the United States? We haven't. Put that aside. We'll do it next year. So we've got PG&E, the county. The state have got lots of land with lots of trees. We'll pay for that and do it next year. Then the federal government have got millions of acres of land, and again, we'll do it some other time. The thing that nobody wants to talk about is the number of trees that are in danger of fouling lines that belong, where the trees are on people's private property. Along the roadside, houses have trees, and you can see the wires. And we say, "Well, PG&E had got up there and fixed that." No. People who own the house have got some liability, haven't they? That's why I said, somebody's not going to like what I'm going to say. I ask the question, therefore, what are we doing in Calaveras County to make sure that the public who have trees, which could become liability, particularly with wires, what are we doing to acquaint those owners with their liabilities and their responsibility, instead of just going in with respect, "I marked my tree, PG&E can mark their tree," and then we have to probably ask permission if we can cut those down? And we leave behind maybe trees on somebody's private property that could actually foul lines, but they don't belong to anybody, and nobody seems to talk about it. And that's why I say, we need to talk about trees on private property. There are thousands of them, and it's not fair just to keep blaming the county and saying, "Where are we going to get the money to do the job?" and sending these poor guys out to cut trees down. And you can see from this, tree cutting is, as I say, damn dangerous work. So that's my thing. What are we doing to acquaint the public with their responsibility for the trees in our county? Thank you.
Thank you.
There's a lot of trees that have been cut down in our district.
Could you kind of direct your questions here?
Oh, thank you. A lot of trees that have been cut down in our district, and they're cut in, a lot of them are just complete trees that have been dropped, and they've been left on private property. I know I have spoken to several people whose homeowner's insurance is canceling their homeowner's because it's a fire hazard, and they want this remediated within, you know, they give them maybe two weeks to clean up the mess. There are so many downed trees that they've come out, they've cut the trees down and just left them. How do we get these trees? Who do we contact to get these trees cleaned up? A lot of the homeowners can't do it. The trees are just too huge, and there's nowhere to take the trees. And when the trees were dropped, there was a contract signed stating that the trees would be picked up, but they've been sitting there for a year, and they're just sitting there rotting. And some of the trees are placed in locations that are dangerous. They're in people's driveways. They're just, the public needs to have phone numbers and a way to contact to get somebody's attention to get out there and pick up these trees because there's more and more being dropped and more and more just being left. And we're not talking leaving them there for two weeks, three weeks. They're being left there for years, and it is causing a huge fire hazard.
Who was the contract signed with?
Some of it was the deforestation, some of it was PG&E, some of it's Mario's dropping the trees. It's all across the board. And it's even getting difficult to even tell who the contract is with because you're signing so many different contracts with so many different companies. Sometimes Nate's comes out and picks up the tree, sometimes Mario's. You just, it's, and then the trees have been dropped and sitting there for so long, you don't even know who to contact. So I'm looking for help of some way to get phone numbers to people who need these trees removed that were dropped.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You're right. It is an issue.
Ann Hill. I live on Jesus Maria Road. Good presentation. On the corner of Whiskey Slide and Jesus Maria, there is BLM land. It's 600 and whatever acres. My property is there. My property is fairly flat. Then there's a mountain, and then there's my pond, and then there's a BLM pond. Each of these two ponds are between a half acre and 3/4 acre. My pond is approximately 40 feet deep at the deep end. This mountain that's on BLM was covered in trees. Now there is not a single tree, not one. I'm talking zero, not a nun, trees. But what's happened in the last four years, as we've had rain, all the dirt, the silt, the everything coming down the mountain is coming down what used to be a waterway that went into my pond, and then my pond fills the second pond. Got that. The silt and all that came down, there used to be a road with a culvert. It's still there, but it's between six and eight feet under mud, sludge, dirt at this point. There are dead trees all over the BLM. We've had to clean up some because they fall on our fence, so we've had to clean up our fence line. The CC trees that were along the road at the second pond, that's the one closest to Watermelon Point, they were CC'd marked. They finally brought the convicts in and cut them down, and they cut them down at the bottom, and they fell. They are now filled into the second pond. It is a big disaster, and it looks horrible, and it is a fire hazard. The trees from the mountainside have come down into the second pond. So they have come down the mountain on that side, and these on the roadside have been pushed in that side. We asked when they were cutting them down. We went down and actually watched when they were going to remove them. Well, all these years later, because they're part of the Butte Fire, they're still there. And one of the guys came by, and he says, "What a mess. What a mess, and it's not being addressed." So that is my concern, is are these trees that are full-length trees dumped into the pond in a waterway, are they going to be removed? That is what I'd like to know. And my neighbors want to know. We all talk about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on this item?
Well, I will just say that Tooluma County has kind of been a leader in this, and I didn't hear you say it unless I missed it, but Tooluma County signed a, I think they're calling a Good Neighbor Authority Agreement with the BLM. So that Tooluma County and its, you know, co-conspirators, I guess, will be able now to go on BLM land and do some cleanup. So I'm sure you've talked to Liz. So do you guys have one yet, or no?
We do not have a Good Neighbor Agreement at this time.
Well, might be worth looking into. And then we worked out some kind of deal. I'm not sure where the grant money came from, where we were able to go in and assist people with their private property. Because, you know, we have a lot of elderly people, and there are people who can't take care of their own land, so they need assistance. So I know they're trying to work in some volunteer crews and get some grant money to go in and be able to assist people, because the punitive approach isn't going to work. So I would just encourage you to look at a couple of those things.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Segala.
Al Segala, Taxpayer Association. Sometime back, the BLM did not want to be responsible for the trees that were affecting the county right-of-way and expected the county to take care of the problem. And it didn't seem right. It seemed like the BLM should be responsible for its own land. So our association wrote a letter, we were going to write a letter to the president, and we got discouraged from doing that because it was suggested that nobody would read it. So we wrote to the Bureau of Land Management and to our congressman. And there was some positive effect from the letter, and former county CIO thought it was a great, best thing ever happened in our county. But it didn't bring results. The BLM did not take responsibility for their own property. And so, looking at this now, perhaps we need to look at the fundamentals. It might be better if BLM, if it doesn't have a legitimate use for, under the Constitution, own that property, should sell it, either just for whatever purpose, and the county can set uses for that property. That would be consistent to environmental and economic and other, you know, considerations. Perhaps that's a long-term solution when a government agency is not responsible for its property. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lori White from Angels Camp. I think you guys are doing a terrific job with this situation. We all know that it's been ignored for years and years and years, so I'm really glad that the county is participating in getting something done. And I was real impressed with this presentation. I'm equally surprised that we have all of these unwanted trees lying around the county that nobody wants to claim or do anything with. And I recall when I lived up in Arnold many, many years ago, back in the 80s, BLM actually had a situation where people could go out and they bought a certain area, an acre or whatever it was, I don't, I didn't do it, so I don't remember. And they would mark the trees that these people could cut down. They cut them down, they cut them up, and they sold them. Because many of us back then, and I'm sure still today, heat their homes with wood. I can recall paying $500 to have a truckload dumped in my driveway so we could cut it up and use it to heat the house. So I'm just wondering why we aren't encouraging some of the people that do that for a living, cut trees. Give them these trees, let them cut them up and sell them for people who need the wood. Wood is very, very expensive. I know there's not a lot of oak up there, and people like to burn oak, but you need cedar and pines to start your fire. So I don't know why BLM is not doing that project anymore, but it sure got rid of a lot of good trees and that needed being cut up. And so maybe we can think about enjoining some of the people that do wood and sell it.
Thank you. Any other public comment? I want to bring that. Maybe we could just answer some of the questions and comments.
Yes, ma'am. So first of all, up on the screen here is the Tree Mortality website that deals specifically with the Tree Mortality Program. The contact number is in the upper right-hand corner for our forester, Dr. Richard Harris, as well as an email link, and those are available all the time on our website. A couple, try and get through all those if I can remember them all. So that's our contact information for Tree Mortality. Now, the Tree Mortality Program itself deals with the bark beetle infestation, and it deals with that infestation along county right-of-ways. So if it's not within a certain proximity to a county road, that's not a part of the Tree Mortality Program. What I heard in some of the comments is some of the other tree issues that we have going, especially in the upcountry where the Butte Fire burned. Where the Butte Fire burned, there is a separate project that is in its second iteration, the Butte Fire Tree Program, and that has been stalled out for an extensive period of time in archaeological review and with some federal agencies. That is actually now coming to an end. FEMA has sent that back to CAL OES. CAL OES is in their final review process, so we will be able to start addressing those Butte Fire trees in what we commonly call Phase 2, although it's Version 2, but here shortly. So it's on its way back down to our level where we can get some guys, some folks out into the field and working on those trees. Yes. To address some of the trees that are left behind, we've also had some, for a lack of better terms, cross-contamination through the many different programs that are taking place. So us as a, as a part of the Tree Mortality Program, we have gone out and marked trees to be mitigated, and we've actually had PG&E come in and follow those trees behind us. We're trying and we're working better with all of the different entities that are out there to try and, hey, if we mark this tree, you know, we have a plan for it, please let us take care of it. But sometimes it conflicts with their vegetation management program, and they go ahead and drop the tree. So there are a lot of different entities up there conducting tree removal, and, you know, we're a very rural county, so we might be using Mario's. We've used Mario's in the past this week, and they may be contracted with PG&E or one of the other utility services next week. So it looks like the same tree crew, because it is, but they're working for a different boss. And everyone, each one of these programs has different removal protocols. Our protocol in this particular program is to remove the tree where we can safely do so. The last thing that we want to do is leave fuel on our forest floor. So if we can remove that tree, we do so. And then we do our best to recycle it through either timber sales, if it's available, if it's fit for that, or biofuel. We chip them sometimes, but our main goal is to take that tree out of our fuel load and do the best that we can with it, considering its individual state. I am aware of other programs that are actually taking some of these trees where people don't want them and cutting them into firewood for the elderly and folks that can't afford to buy firewood. to buy firewood. And that's being done by Central Calaveras County Fire through volunteers. They actually have a wood splitter, they go buck them to length, and they're cutting and stacking wood for folks. So there's a lot of different projects in play, there's a lot of moving parts, moving towards the same goal of getting some containment on the fuel load within our forests here in Calaveras County. I think that answers almost, unless I missed one, if someone will remind me.
The others of PG&E issue and that one.
And so are we. We meet and talk with PG&E regularly, and they are actually very much interested in being better neighbors and altering their fuel, their vegetation control program. Especially when we happen to mention them to them that when they are trying to change the way they do business in causing fires, that this causes as much fire as the electrical lines when you leave the fuel. So we're trying to do our best to educate them in that manner.
That's mostly their community outreach needs. Sorry. Mr. Mill.
Yes. As you're aware, Foothill Fire Safe Council does a lot of work on private property. So if there are people that have trees that are of some danger, they need to contact the Foothill Fire Safe Council and see what they can do, because they may be able to take a lot of that cost off the shoulders of the private property owner. Secondly, we don't have a two-care system here, although they do work in the county a little bit. That is a very strong organization in Toolumee County and very appreciative of what they're doing. Master stewardship agreement was very close to being finished in our county. I know that former CEO Lutz, Kathy Galino, Brian Moss, myself, we met with U.S. Forest Service about that. It's a very simple process. If the good neighbor policy works better, then John, I would suggest that, you know, whatever direction we go, just so we can get that handshake to happen and move things along a little quicker with the federal government. But I'm not against the idea of a good neighbor policy, it's just I was trying to find some way to get some cooperation. Their 26% of our ground right now is federally owned in Calaveras County. We're not the 74% of Toolumee County, but we still have, they have a substantial stake here, so we need to be sure that they're a good partner. So, thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Oh, how boring. You want to hear me?
I told her a couple times. She doesn't just. Here.
Okay, I'm sorry.
You can have my ribbon for telling her.
If there's no other supervisors' comments, I want to thank you both for coming, and we'll see you again in four months. I mean, I really appreciate this.
Thank you.
After you do Sky High. Thank you. We're going to take a five-minute recess. In the meeting, please. Move to item 28.
Item 28 is from Public Works to adopt the local road safety plan for Calaveras County.
Morning, Chair Callaway and members of the board. My name is Joshua Pack. I'm your Director of Public Works and Transportation, and I'm joined by a very special guest, our Public Works Analyst Chantel Garvin, who's been an instrumental part in preparing our local road safety plan. We'll be presenting on that today. And with that said, I'm going to turn over the beginning of this presentation to Chantel.
Thank you, Josh. Good morning. I'm really excited to be here today with you guys to share one of the major focus areas in Public Works right now, and that is road safety. Specifically, the reduction of fatal and severe injury crashes. As part of this focus, we've developed a plan, and that's called the Local Road Safety Plan. And the plan really summarizes our goals, our vision, our current efforts and our future efforts. And we've developed two overarching goals. And that is a 25% in overall crash reductions by 2023 and a 50% crash reduction, fatal injury crash reduction by 2025. Now, in the future, this plan will actually be a requirement for federal funding, but we see it as an opportunity to improve some of the statistics that we have here in the county. Speaking of statistics, in 2017, 18 people lost their lives in car accidents in Calaveras County. And I'm sure many, many more people were affected. Furthermore, over the last decade, Calaveras County has had the third highest fatal and severe injury crash rates in California. The three primary collision factors are, one, improper turning. Now, this is everything from two-way, pulling out of a two-way stop to pulling out of your driveway. Two, driving under the influence. Three, unsafe speeds. But there's one thing that all of these things have in common, and that is human error. People make mistakes, people are going to make mistakes, but we're committed to preventing those mistakes from costing a life.
Thank you, Chantel. The one thing I want to highlight before we go to the next slide is, this is a guidance document. It's almost akin to a strategic plan. So this kind of provides a blueprint for us to move forward with projects and programs on the Public Works side. We recognize, for example, we may be able to do projects and programs that have a significant impact in the reduction of improper turning collisions. DUI, you know, the decision to drive while under the influence is something that, you know, Public Works may not have as much of an influence. But we see ourselves as a leader in the community with our partners, fire, local agencies, CHP, the Sheriff's Office, et cetera, where we can partner with them, provide guidance, provide information. We'll talk more about that in a coming slide. But we see ourselves as a partner with those agencies to work together, because we all have a common goal of reducing collision rates. And this is really an effort to provide an umbrella to cover all of those services. Now, Chantel had mentioned that we have the third highest collision rates over the last 10 or 11 years. And the reason I put this on here is, someone sees that and they may have the impression that, well, Calaveras County is not doing something right. Calaveras County is being negligent in their duties. And I would argue against that point. You look at the list of the top 10, every one of our neighbors, Alpine, Amador, Mariposa, Toolumee, are all in that top or bottom 10 listed you'd like to look at it. You look at Trinity, Sierra, Palmas. These all counties are counties that are rural, have mountainous and alpine regions where the decision to, an incorrect decision or an incorrect mistake where you go run off the road in other counties has a much lesser consequence than here in Calaveras County. So the reason I highlight that is, again, is not to say that we can't do more. We absolutely should and can do more, but it's to highlight the fact that our nature and our just topography and our geography statistics show that it has an inclination towards higher fatal and severe injury rates compared to more urbanized areas. So when we talk about what Calaveras County does and what we've done historically, much like every other agency, we deal with what we call reactive roadway safety. This will not stop. This is a core of what we do. And in reality, this is how we respond to issues in the past, whether it's a recent accident or some sort of event or near miss. Issues that are, safety issues that may be perceived, maybe real or may be perceived by the public. If we're fortunate, we have some sort of historic collision data we can use. We may use design standards, we may use our own engineering judgment to come up with solutions or identify issues. Sometimes we get resident complaints and concerns, and that can stem our reaction to a roadway safety issue. And sometimes we get direction from elected officials, or sometimes I may direct my staff to look at issues related to roadway safety. And so, and while that will never go away, when we're looking at our long-term, the list that we just saw, and our ability and efforts to move away from that, we see some issues. First of all, when we try to look at responses and proactive measures to reduce accidents, we recognize that low volume in rural locations, sometimes it's difficult to detect patterns over a long period of time, especially on a road that may carry 50 cars a day, 100 cars a day. It may be years or decades before the data is actually there to suggest some sort of pattern. Sometimes we get data and information that may not actually correlate to an actual roadway deficiency. It may be something entirely different. So when we're looking at data, we may, there may be a high incident location, and it may just be a blip on the radar. It may be a quirk or something like that. And so we need to use our expertise in recognizing which one of those are prevalent of a longer trend and which one may just be a very temporary action. We don't want to disproportionately respond to something that may not be inherently a safety issue. We talk about politically and socially motivated issues. This happens from time to time where you may have a movement and a reaction to something that may be disproportionate to the action. And one of the things that will still be there is the response to an isolated improvement or isolated location. We may go spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on one location, one curve, or one small stretch of road. And that's great, and that solves that location, but we have 690 miles of road. And we need to look at solutions and begin to shift the focus, not continuing this focus, but also shift and have a second focus towards future more proactive responses, more systemic programs. And we recognize that if we can find, and there are low-cost systemic proactive responses out there that have been tried and true, that if we started adopting those, we can dramatically reduce the collisions and fatal and severe injury accident collisions here in Calaveras County. And so with that, Chantel's going to talk a little bit on this guise, on how the Local Road Safety Plan fits into this whole thing and our renewed focus over the next decade. And on to that. And the last thing I want to focus on here before I shift it to you is, we have been in the last number of years in a pattern of having to respond to reactive incidents. The Butte Fire, three different winter storms, projects that have been in our, that we've been trying to move forward, that have been on the books for a lot of years. This is what I believe is our next action moving forward. As we start distancing ourselves from these various disasters, to me, this is the next focus for us. This is something where we can make a tangible difference for our community to improve the well-being of our residents.
So the Local Road Safety Plan was developed to be used as a tool to track and analyze our progress over time. So it has crash data, it has projects, it has our public outreach process, it has a timeline for implementation so that we can, you know, measure our success. It's really meant to be a living document that's updated periodically, maybe annually, so that we can see what's working well, what's not working well. This is an example of a data table, so there's several data tables in the plan, but they all follow the same format. It'll be the last three years, and this one's the primary collision factors that we discussed earlier. And so as we see updates, we're hoping to find trends and analyze those trends and see how the plan is being implemented.
Yeah, and the one thing I want to highlight with this slide too is, this also gives us some, galvanizes our approaches. For example, improper turning, if we can do some low-cost measures, things as improved signage, which we'll talk about in the upcoming slide, improved striping, improved visibility through selective vegetation removal, we can have a significant impact on that. Disproportionately, we recognize that, for example, traffic signals and signs is not a big issue. So, you know, always stops, et cetera, you know, if we're going to focus, putting a disproportionate focus on some of these things like pedestrian violations, while pedestrian safety is certainly important, we recognize that by and large, we don't have a lot of pedestrian accidents in Calaveras County. So while we still continue to focus on that, we want to recognize that there are categories here that we can have a significant impact by focusing efforts on.
Safety partners, this was a really exciting part of the plan. We actually reached out to a lot of different agencies, from Angels Camp to law enforcement, hospitals, school districts, fire departments. And we had a really, we got some really good feedback. While recognizing that not every partnership is the same, some partnerships maybe will collaborate on building a plan together, while some will play an advisory role and help them apply for grants or provide safety or crash data for their grant applications. So this is our first year of doing this, and we're really looking forward to seeing these relationships develop over time. This is what the public outreach or stakeholder outreach process looked like, looks like. This is what we did. We sent the draft plan to our safety partners for review and comment. Then we sent also a list of funding opportunities that may be appropriate for them. And we offered our help to assess them if they had any questions with the grants. And it was really exciting this year that we actually, it was only one project, but we got a project, we're teaming up with the City of Angels Camp Fire Department. They're right now on an on-call system for emergencies, and now they'll be using, they're applying for a grant to get funding to receive pagers. So instead of, you know, calling one person at a time, the system will page everyone at once. And in fatal and severe injury crashes, 15 minutes could mean a life or death situation. So it's one project, but we're really excited. And then we were able to incorporate that into the plan.
Again, it's different levels of reaction, and we're here, the goal is for us to be a willing partner with our partners. You know, I know I had a question previously about CHP. You know, the opportunities are there between us, whether it's, CHP's been a good partner with us to provide collision data. As a matter of fact, we've updated, we now have a comprehensive collision database system that goes back to 2000. The CHP has partnered with us to give us, each month giving us up-to-date data. So now our data is far up to date beyond the traditional data through what's called the Twitter system online, which takes about a year or so. They're usually about nine months to a year behind. And so we're catching up. We have data now that's newer, that's better, that's fresher, and we can track and respond to trends quicker than relying on data that's a little sooner. So there's a partnership that's benefiting us by that relationship with CHP. And so the last slide here, one of the last slides, is the projects we're implementing. And again, talking about a guidance document, this plays well on the ideas for projects like the capital improvement program for Public Works, the one you just adopted. These things should have some synergy between the two. Projects we identify in there could be generated by the Local Road Safety Plan. Conversely, we're making sure that the projects we deliver meet the guidance and the standards in that program. And making, yeah. So as far as some of the current projects we're working on, this is just a small list. The annual stripe, and let me preface this, some of these are very unsexy projects. They don't move the needle, residents see them and go, oh, that's not really cool. But we know that despite the fact that they're not the flashiest projects, they have the most profound impact on road safety. Annual striping is a good example. The last few years, we haven't had a robust striping program. We know through experience that, especially in higher elevations, with snowplows and snowplow operators can dramatically affect the lifetime of striping. And so through a more robust annual striping program, we've budgeted $200,000 each year to do most of our roads, that we can, by refreshing striping, residents can make more informed decisions and be more educated on the conditions of the road. We know, we just know, and so I'm really excited about that. First project's going to start this spring. We have a contractor on hand, and this will be an ongoing project each and every year. Edged Line Delineaters is a project that we're starting here in the next month or so. It's a federal grant through the Highway Safety Improvement Program. That'll identify high-risk curve locations by improving striping at those, delineators at those locations. Again, to improve the ability of drivers to make informed decisions, in particular in low light situations like fog, nighttime, snow, et cetera. Seeing those as they come up to a curve gives them a more informed decision of where the edge of that road is, in particular in rural areas where there might not be much of a difference between the edge of the road and the beginning of a cliff. The road safety and signage audit, this to me is the most, has the opportunity for the greatest benefit here in Calaveras County. We have a grant that's identified more than 200 miles of road, and we'll be looking at our signage throughout each and every regulatory and warning sign, the yellow and the white signs, we'll be looking at all of those. Where can we improve visibility? Over time, signs degrade in their reflectivity. Those need to be replaced. There's locations that have incorrect speed advisories, perhaps a curve that should be signed at a 20 mile an hour, may incorrectly be signed at a 30 mile an hour, may be incorrectly signed at a 10 mile an hour curve. We can improve what's called chevrons, they're the arrows on curves, to improve the, as folks are driving through the curve. And so this program goes and looks at more than 200 miles and makes recommendations and options to improve our signage throughout the county. And the goal on that is, we see through consistency and the ability of residents to make decisions on the road. If that sign is an adequate representation and an accurate representation of what that driver should behave at, they come to trust those signs, and by trusting them and being more educated on the roads and decisions, they can make better decisions which hopefully lead to reduced collisions. We have a guardrail safety upgrade. That's again, another federal grant. The goal of that is to look at existing guardrails. A lot has changed in the last 20 to 20 years with guardrails regarding guardrail safety. We found the guardrails that are 30 and 40 years We found the guardrails that are 30 and 40 years old sometimes have a disproportionate impact on the collision. They could, they could have a worse impact hitting the guardrail than they do if there's no guardrail there. And so we'll be looking at the guardrails at, I think, seven or so locations to determine what the necessary improvements are and make those improvements so that in the unfortunate incident that a resident or a driver hits that, that they have a much greater likelihood to survive that incident. Intersection and corridor improvements, things like the Oberon's Ferry Project, the Mountain Ranch Road Project, those are ongoing in our program. Repaving programs, trying to improve the surface of the road so that it's, you know, safer, less potholes, less inconsistencies in pavement. We talked about the Angels Camp Project already, really excited about that, again, very small, but an opportunity to team with a partner. And then the next phase of safety grants and programs will be coming out in this spring, Spring 2020. And so these are some projects we've never done before here. And I've done them in the past, I've seen tremendous success with them. They're very low-cost, high-benefit projects. High-friction surface treatment, it's a, it's a, it is what it sounds like it is. It's a very rough road, for lack of a better term, it improves friction on the road, it reduces the amount of run-off-the-road accidents. For those familiar, in Highway 17, heading up to Santa Cruz, there was a small stretch of road over a three-year period, they had 144 collisions due to run-off-the-road accidents. After they put the surface down, zero accidents in that same location over the next three years. So our new collision database system that we have with up-to-date CHP data, we can actually go in, identify high-incident curves, high-incident locations, those with severe and fatal injuries, and target those specific locations with projects like this over a dozen or two dozen locations to have a dramatic impact. Again, one curve won't have a dramatic impact, but a systemic project to look at two dozen curves may have the opportunity to greatly reduce collisions. The next two, again, on the realm of sexiness, they're not high, but thermoplastic striping, which is hot plastic, we can apply it on the roadway surface. It doesn't work in higher elevations because plows tend to pull it up, but in mid and lower elevations, they actually put small glass beads in the surface which reflects light. And so this high-visibility striping, when you're driving along a road, especially at night in fog and snow, has the impact of greatly improving visibility and reducing pneumatic collisions. It works for us because it also has a much longer lifetime. A typical thermoplastic stripe under good conditions can last five years or more. Normal striping under the same condition may last a year or two. And so for us, we can see a reduction in maintenance costs by doing a thermoplastic stripe through a federal grant, and then be able to focus our funding elsewhere. Recession centerline markers, this is a great in higher elevations where you may have, thermoplastic may not work, you can use recessed centerlines, either recessed centerline striping or recessed markers, again, proving the ability under low-light situations, under white-out conditions. You now have, instead of a questionable striping, you now have these centerline divots, for lack of a better term, with reflectors, that makes the driver more likely to stay on that road, reducing the collision. So I think what you see with this, before we close it up and open to questions, and I'm sure you've got a lot of questions, is this focus is really, we will always be a reactive group. We need to do that, we have to do that. But this is our first real effort long-term to identify our vision over the next five years, which is systemic safety projects. What can we do over five miles of road, 100 miles of road? By doing that, taking that approach and focusing in that way, we have the opportunity, in Public Works alone, to have a significant impact in reducing collisions. And then these partnerships, whether it's CHP, or FIRE, or the City of Angels Camp, has a cumulative impact. So again, in total, with all of these things in mind, our hope and our goal, and it's an ambitious goal, but I think it's a very achievable goal, is to reduce our overall collisions by 25% by December 2023, and reduce our fatal and severe injuries by 50% by 2025. And so to that end, I'm sure you have questions, and both Chantel and I are here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Supervisors, do any of you have any questions? Mr. Garmendy?
Great, I mean, really. If you could achieve that 50% reduction, I mean, those are our friends and family that are going to be living. So that's really important. When you look at the data for the fatalities throughout the county, are you finding it, are you finding it in certain areas? I mean, a lot of our population lives down in lower elevations. Are there more fatalities at high because of EMS response, or is there any patterns that you're seeing?
Yeah, it's a great question, and the answer's no. I mean, there's, we have areas of high incident, and so we can, we pull up data, and it's proportionate to the amount of traffic, right, to the most part, if you have high, you know, busy locations. I know one that comes off the top of my head is Garner and Olive Orchard in 26, is a location that has a large number, and that's on a Caltrans facility. We find that fatal and severs have a somewhat, they're not necessarily correlated to the total, because sometimes the conditions and the situations related to those incidents are outside of the range of the actual incident itself, like whether you wear your seatbelt versus not wearing your seatbelt. That's a, a social decision, has nothing to do with the road condition, it has nothing to do with the actual collision itself, you know, the, obviously, you know, the deployment of an airbag, the age of the person in question, you know, if we have, I've seen the same incident with someone who's much younger walk away with much less of an injury than someone who maybe isn't as good a shape to withstand that injury. So what we found is, and we could share that information offline or separately, is we found that fatals and severs, there's not some, you know, divining rod, divining rod, or, you know, that there's, oh, this one particular location, there's a bunch. It tends to be random and sporadic. But again, that's why this is so important, because if we wait to look for a pattern in fatal and severs, or a pattern, it can take decades before that happens. So this is our effort and our response to stop an incident before it actually happens, and do it before it's actually even identified by us.
Thank you very much, Josh. Thank you very much, Hunter.
Mrs. Stoppa.
Thank you for bringing up Olive Orchard and Garner. That's been a hot topic I've talked to you about since before, before I was sitting behind the dais here, and I appreciate the work you are going forward with on the planning grant and everything else on that. So you already touched on it, thanks.
Mr. Tuffin.
Yeah, Josh, the statistic that you provided to us, how many of those are actually county roads versus Caltrans roads that we have very little control over?
Yeah, so this data, it's a great question, and I didn't, I put this in the slide, this is actually our data. So our system can pull state data and pull out the state highways, so this is Calaveras County data only. Now, the data about the overall collision rates that I shared, Calaveras and Amador, that's statewide. The state data doesn't discriminate between that information, but this, that table there that you see is purely county roads. It doesn't include private roads, it doesn't include state highways or other facilities, it's only roads that Calaveras County maintains. So that's where we can have the greatest impact, is those accidents right there.
And the fatality rates, that was statewide as well.
The fatality numbers that you had was statewide, yeah.
I'm sorry, it was state roads as well as county roads.
State roads as well as county, okay. The other question I had was, I guess, since you separated it out, and these are only county roads, it was kind of not relevant, but my question was going to be geared towards Caltrans now, whenever they do any road improvements, their design is a 70 mile an hour design when they go back in and redo the roads. And is there any given statistics on the impact of that? Has it increased or decreased collisions, or any accidents or anything by them doing that?
Yeah, and I can, I can respond kind of anecdotally, I don't have a perfect apples-to-apples answer to that question. I can say that, and I actually had a slide in here previously, and I pulled it, that shows the collision data's over the last 30 to 40 years, and we're seeing, what we saw is between 1980 and about 20, 2009, 2011, this is nationally, and so other agencies doing the same thing, we saw a steady decline. Over the last 10 years or so, we've seen it somewhat flatten out. And so we see, actually, in the last couple of years, we've seen it peak upwards just a little bit, pedestrian collisions have gone up a little bit. Part of that, though, is to the economy. And so the economy's much better than it was in 2012, 2013, a lot more cars on the road, and so the collision rates are actually almost identical. This is again, why this is so important, is because we're, all the tools that we're used to using, and all these reactive tools and everything else, we've done, and safety, and a lot of it's related to safeties of cars and design improvements in vehicles and things like, you know, turn systems and lane, all those lane avoidance systems, all those things help, but we've seen kind of a flattening, like there's not much more we can do with the tools we use now. And so on the Caltrans side, I can say anecdotally that they've seen a slight reduction, but I, you know, I can say nationally that we're seeing, you know, things are kind of flat, they're not, they're not, we're not seeing those gains. I think the gains that you're looking for, that we love to see, I think something more dramatic has to happen, things outside of our control, and I'll save that for another discussion. But yeah, that's, I know I didn't totally answer that question, I hopefully hit on parts of it.
Thank you.
Mr. Meld.
Yes, I find it rather interesting about fatalities or injuries, that the drunker you are, it seems that you survive better, just from personal experience, I've seen that happen too many times. But there, I'm sure that there's identifiable road segments within our county system that seem, that need more attention than others. And you folks have probably pretty well put those together, I see them on the CIP and in other pieces that we've already looked at today. But what I'd like to address real quickly is, is that you've set some parameters and some goals. And with those comes a cost. In other words, there's going to be a cost associated, whether we pay it, or it's H tip, or how it's done. But have you identified what those costs are going to be to achieve the goals that you've set here?
Yeah, I haven't gone through and done an actual analysis of the, especially some of the planning level as part of the local road safety plan, and that's part of the joy, right? It's a guidance document. From there, when the rubber meets the road, that's a little bit more difficult, it's meant to be an achievable part. I can say from our side, I've looked at it a little bit, because we have a limited set of resources, and we talked about that, in particular with the road projects with Senate Bill One, a lot of the benefits we need. Part of this will be, when we repave roads as part of the Senate Bill One, we'll be implementing some of these safety measures, whether it's recessed markers, thermoplastic striping, things that we can do as part of that project that are included in that funding to do that. A lot of the projects that we've identified here, whether it's the Road Safety Audit, High Friction, Thermoplastic, Recession Centerline Markers, are through what's called the Highway Safety Improvement Program. It's a robust federal grant program. Rural agencies tend to do pretty well on it. I have, I've participated in that state committee in the past, and so I have a very good working knowledge, and my staff has a really good working knowledge of how that committee works. And so we know the sort of projects that do well, and we've seen, and I didn't list some of the Alpine and mountain regions on here, there are counties that share our characteristics that are much lower on that list, and a lot of those counties are doing these exact measures. So again, we have, we have a blueprint on how to do that, and the costs of these aren't expensive. I can say, you know, the Road Safety Audit, the actual construction, the design's more expensive than the construction because signs aren't, and by and large, aren't overly expensive. That'll probably be somewhere about a million dollars total. The edge line's really small, our annual striping's $200,000. High-friction surface will probably be half million to three-quarters of a million entirely, almost entirely or entirely funded through federal grants. Thermoplastic striping's very cheap, and all of these things have incredible benefit-cost ratios. So when we look at the benefits over time, the reduction of collisions and the cost to do those, and the fact that they're almost entirely federally funded, the actual local cost to us is pretty minimal, just maybe a small local match here and there, and then our time. And so pretty minimal versus the potential gains.
My only, maybe I'd need to restate it a little bit, but my only concern is, is that if we set goals, that those goals are achievable, because we don't put ourselves in a position where we can't financially make it happen. So I just want that to be part of the conversation, and the importance of, how are you going to fund it? I know the H tip is there, but how are you going to fund it, and can you meet those goals by 2025?
And the goals were, and now, let me dig in on that. So yes, I think they're achievable goals, I wouldn't, and actually, there's a state template, and the state template recommends to some agencies or agencies to adopt a zero fatality rate by 2020, or by some, I think that's unrealistic, you know, especially with some of the randomness that relates to fatalities, that's impossible to match. So part of this was, what can we see? I looked at some of our partners that have lower collision rates, similar Alpine or mountainous regions that have, and I looked at theirs, and I use that as a target. And so that's why I think 25%, I think, and it recognizes that by 25, by 25, 2023, all of these projects and the current project will be adopted, completed, and we'll have two to three years of data on that. That's why I think that's the case. And then these projects on the lower side, lower right-hand corner of the screen, those are ones I hope to adopt, get the grant funding, and do by 2022, 2023, which then gives us a three-year period to track those. So those dates of 2023 and 2025 were picked on purpose because of the implementation of both of these. So I think they're achievable targets, and this is just our control too, if we can work with partners, whether it's CHP, et cetera, to make some improvements there too, I think it's an achievable target.
One of the things I've found in my areas is that oftentimes the CHP data is not complete, because I compare it to the fire service and their responses to particular incidents on public roadways, there are missing links, because if it never ends up in a CHP report, you don't have the data, but it's still there. And I refer to down there by the Lakes Treatment Center, and the number of vehicles that have gone off the road onto their parking lot, only one CHP report was ever issued, and yet I can show through the fire service four separate days of same, the same thing happened. So I just want to be sure that we're carefully understanding that CHP data is not the final answer here, and that there is more in the background.
Yeah, and I agree with you, and I have to chuckle a little bit, because every, when I talk to individual residents, everyone's convinced that their location has the highest amount of unreported collisions in the county. And so that is part of our, and part of what we do too, is when we see the collisions, we go look, and you can see evidence, if it's a guardrail that's been hit multiple, multiple times, you know that there's a much higher, and we know that especially at night, especially in a rural area, someone gets in an accident, it's a non-severe or fatal. Severe and fatal's almost always get reported. If it's a minor or property damage only, we don't get those. And so the way the system works, especially the Highway Safety Improvement Program, is it's disproportionately favors accidents with fatal and severe injuries. So property damage only, you need to have 15 property damage only accidents to kind of equate to one severe. And so that's one of the good things. We do encourage folks, even though sometimes it's long and laborious, that, you know, report collisions, because this is what we rely on, is this data, and so if, you know, and people are going to make their decisions, I'm not expecting what I say today is going to change the world, but it's important to recognize that this data is part of our decision-making process, and so, yeah.
Well, thank you for stepping up and making this happen, Chantel, for your work on it as well, and I'm sure that I'm going to look forward to how this works out.
What I'm not clear on, I understand the vision, I truly appreciate there's a strategic plan in place, but then you have your capital improvement projects, and I'm still not clear on how they dovetail. Do you use SB 1 money for your striping program, which we have every year?
Yeah, let me.
I'm waiting for you to come to D3, and I'm three years out, so I'm interested in how these are going to dovetail.
We have a lot, in my defense, we have a lot of projects in D3 this year. Paving may not be the one, but we have a lot of other stuff between Plague and, well, that's a different discussion for a.
Yeah, you just gave me a bridge, right? I'm looking for another one.
That's a different discussion for a different time. But the thing I want to highlight is, is the projects, for example, they feed off each other. So, you know, we already had the Road Safety Audit, the Edge Line Delinators, the Annual Striping, we're already in the Capital Improvement Program. We recognize that projects in there provide a significant safety benefit, and so we populate that into the Local Road Safety Plan. The Local Road Safety Plan also has an opportunity to identify new projects and programs to potentially populate the CIP. So for example, we have, let's say, High Friction Surface Treatment, really cool project. We identify that in the Local Road Safety Plan. This spring, we'll be going for a grant opportunity. If we're successfully receiving that grant, we'll come to the board with the adoption of that grant, and then the next year's Capital Improvement Program will adopt the High Friction Surface Treatment Project within the Capital Improvement Program. So they're not, they're cousins, they, they, they work with each other, they should be synergy, we shouldn't be doing projects in the CIP that don't reflect our, our vision and mission in the Local Road Safety Plan, and projects identified in the Local Road Safety Plan should be identified in the CIP. So they're sister documents.
I understand, and I know I talked to you about this, you could have things that, that meet the vision, that should be a program, or that should be done based on the vision for this, but then you have roads that are in real bad shape, besides every road in the county. How, how are you going to marry that, which they don't have fatalities, but they're falling apart, and...
Yeah, I'm not sure I totally understand, let me take a stab at that. So... So, roads in rough shape, first of all, a lot of the projects you're seeing here have nothing to do with pavement condition. So things like the road safety and sign and jod has nothing to do with road condition. Guardrail audit, nothing to do. Striping, yes, striping does have that. So it doesn't make sense, for example, for us, it still makes sense for us to restripe a road, even if the road's in pretty poor condition. We may not thermoplastic it, because thermoplastics, three to five times more expensive, you know? It doesn't make sense to put a really expensive treatment on a road. We may be coming back in a couple of years to resurface. You know, one of the interesting things is, you know, roads, while we want to fix our roads, maintain them, you know, a lot of times, we see the low speeds related to roads in pretty rough shape, and we don't see a high collision rate, because a lot of times those roads have low volumes. A lot of times, those roads are low speed, they're in mountainous areas. And so, you know, so actually, those conditions may be a little bit conducive to some sort of traffic calming. And I don't want to suggest that we let our roads go to pot, because we want to keep vehicles slower. We need to maintain our roads, it's a critical element. But, you know, I think that, like I said, a lot of these programs have nothing to do with pavement performance. They have to do with all of these other factors that can help reduce collisions if done properly. Did I hit it, did I hit the spot, or?
Yeah, sort of. So I think I got it. One more. You mentioned about speed limit signs and making sure they're correct, and doesn't that have to be done per the motor vehicle requirements?
Yeah, and what I meant by that is, and speed limits are speed limits, and, you know, those are adopted by a very strict set of laws, and I don't want to spend five minutes today going through the details of that. But curve advisory signs are a little different. Those are your yellow-on-black signs. You see like a curved arrow, and it may say 15 or 20. And so those are different. Those are not, they're not speed limits, they're speed advisory signs. They're put in speed limits. If you have a 35 mile an hour speed limit zone, but individual locations suggest speeds lower than that, you want to use those signs, because you don't want to have 87 speed limits for every curve. You want to have these advisory. What we do, though, is we actually have a device as we drive around it, it's called a ballbank indicator. We drive around the corner, and we measure the Gs pulled, you know, by driving around the corner. And there's actually studies show that based on a certain amount of Gs, you should sign it at this speed. And so what happens is, is over time, that sign may not accurately reflect what the actual speed should be driving around that corner. It may be lower, it may be higher. And so if someone sees a sign that says 20, and they know they can drive it at 40, you know, it results in a somewhat of a disregard to that sign. So, you know, while we'll be looking at speed limit signs, really what I meant on that comment, my apology for any confusion, is those advisory signs, making sure that those are exactly the way they should be, appropriate for the curve on which they're approaching.
So, does your department or the board have the authority to change that?
The advisory signs? Yes. That's a pure safety thing, that has no requirement of the board, that's all done by engineering study.
And although we won't be changing the speed limits, we will be looking at the speed limit signs to make sure they're the appropriate size, they have the appropriate reflectology.
Yeah, or sometimes we adopt a speed limit, and we may inadvertently miss a sign, right? We reduce it from 40 to 35, and maybe there's an old 40 sign we thought we got, we just didn't, or, you know, things like that. So we'll be looking at that as well, to make sure we're consistent in our sign, and make sure that the zones actually match.
Okay. I got a request recently for somebody who lives in Lakemont, and Lakemont and Four are disaster, but similar. But they had said, can we, in this case, it'd be Caltrans, paint the speed limit on the road? Do you think that serves any purpose?
Um...
I've noticed in Sacramento, it'll say Highway 50 or 80, but that's more directional versus a speed.
Yeah, I can answer that. So statistically show that it doesn't help. Drivers, and I'm happy if folks don't agree with me, because this goes counterintuitive with what public perception is. If you don't agree with me, go Google it, go read stuff. If you find different information, share it with me. Statistics show that drivers drive in the condition of which the roads and which present themselves. About 85% or so drive at conditions at or below what is considered safe. Signage, additional signage, incorrect signage, artificially low signage, has no tangible impact on the overspeed. Now, that doesn't mean one or two vehicles may slow down when they see it, but on average, it has no impact, whether it's a pain on the road, whether it's a sign. That's why, and again, I'm starting to get into territory I didn't want to cover here, that's why we're so, the rules are so specific on how we establish speed limits, because we know that artificially, setting speed limits artificially low can actually lead to an increase in collision rates, because you get this gap between what driver conditions are and what we're telling them to drive. And we see statistically that if we establish speed limits, either what the driver, the conditions in which the drivers drive, might not be the slowest speed, but we see statewide, nationally, throughout the world, that we actually reduce collision rates by doing it in that manner. And that's why the rules are so specific, because it can be tough when a resident comes up and asks you to lower speed, and they have a thousand good reasons, and you know statistically that if you do that, it's actually a disservice to them. So a short, a long answer to a short question, but in reality, those things have, they look good on the public, and the public likes them, but as far as actual speeds, they have no impact.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this presentation?
I'm Will Moore from Rancho Calaveras, and that Garner and 26 intersection, I use that every day, so I'm familiar with it. And the main problem I see there is, to the west, about an eighth of a mile, there are trees growing close to the road. So it's a short sight distance on that side. But overall, I see this, what I call fog lines, what you're calling edge lines. That to me, driving is the main problem in the whole situation. In the subdivision where I live, I complained to the homeowners association and get some fog lines out there, and they did it. But I drove to Angel's Camp from Valley Springs on Sunday. I had a near head-on collision going, but had some uncomfortable moments coming back at night. Driving at night, they should be using that ground glass in the edge lines. I mean, driving at night in these mountain roads, the edge lines are more important than the center lines, and they seem to be overlooked a lot. Anyhow, my complaint.
Well, he had some good points. Also, this is an excellent presentation. You know, I'm beginning to think, we're getting an awful lot of things solved in our Director of Public Works, you know? We're going to appoint him pretty quick, where everything's going to be solved, there'll be nothing more for him to do. And I'm thinking that maybe we can rent him out to other counties, as a profit center, reduce taxes.
No, he can keep going.
All right. The previous speaker had a very intelligent point, and that's the wrinkle, how do you call it, the crep lines or wrinkled lines on the side of the road, and also on the center lines, do seem to have a positive effect on reducing, but I don't know if there's any studies done on that, to show what's the difference in having just white lines or wrinkly white lines. I know one thing for sure, if I have a number of people in the car with me, and I hit one of those lines, oh man, they really abuse me like I'm a bad driver. And so if it can train me, maybe it saves lives.
Thank you, Mr. Segala.
Thank you. Lori White from Angel's Camp. I just have a quick question that kind of comes under, there's something wrong with this picture, and I'm not sure that we can do anything about it, or this gentleman has any impact on it, but I want to mention it anyway. As many of us drive down to the valley to do whatever we do in the valley, or go somewhere, go down Highway 12 through Valley Springs, and when you get past the intersection that is actually in San Joaquin County at 88, you see about a mile and a half of guardrails along protecting flat land. I don't know what they're protecting vehicles from doing, hitting trees, maybe there's maybe some old oak trees along there. I'm not too sure what it is, but I know those guardrails come in the tune of hundreds of thousands of dollars for, you know, just a small parcel of them. But yet, on Highway 49 going over to Sonora, there are two or three curves along there that turn to the left, and if you're driving to Sonora, just the least little bit of distraction, and you could go right the street off of the edge and very possibly roll your vehicle. And I wonder how San Joaquin County managed to get hundreds of thousands of dollars to protect a couple of trees, or maybe they're protecting the grapevines behind those trees, I don't know. And yet, we have so many of our residents traveling over to Tuolumne County who can be dumped off the side of the road, because there's no railing there. So I don't know if we do that, but it's certainly something that I think most of the residents here think about. Something wrong with this picture.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments on this?
I came here specially for this. Thank you so much. I'm so glad someone is talking about this, because this has been my soapbox topic for like four years in Tuolumne County. And I'm concerned that we kill people. So if you go down Washington Street, or whatever, chances are, if you're a pedestrian, somebody's going to try to hit you every single day, all day long. So I would disagree with some of your statements, but I don't live here, so you don't owe me anything. But if you drive on Stockton Road in Sonora, we've only had, we had nine accidents last year, and that's where our two fatalities were. So it does matter where the intersections are, and it's, I think it's important to know that data. And I'm really sorry that CHP didn't come here, because I've met with your Accident Investigation Officer here myself, and he would have had a lot to offer, I think, and been supportive. So you might want to ask him back another time. So the Federal Highway Administration has come out with a National Pedestrian Safety Action Plan in the last few months, so you might want to check that out. And just last week, the California State Transportation Agency published their Zero Traffic Fatalities Task Force report. And that's going to change, especially, I believe, the way we look at speed limits, because speed limits on our roads are set by, if you do a traffic study, 85% of the going speed. So if everybody speeds, that's going to raise your speed limit. So in Tuolumne County, that caused the speed limit to go up on Stockton Road, which wasn't safe, made it go up on Tuolumne Road, which wasn't safe. So if you drive out to Black Oak Casino, be careful. So that'll, I think, really seriously take away the 85% formula for setting the speed limit, and will allow local agencies to determine their own speed limit, because speeds do matter, and they do kill. So the statistics are that if you're, I think it's 20 miles an hour, 90% will survive, 10% will be fatal. If you're driving 30 miles an hour, it'll be like 60% will survive, 40% will be fatal. If you're driving 40 miles an hour, 80% will be fatal. So speed matters. So what the task force and the vision Zero programs are looking at is that drivers are going to make mistakes, people aren't going to pay attention. So what you have to do is modify your roads and your traffic patterns, so that if something happens, it will not be fatal or serious. So we did have, I think it was in December, a head-on collision in which nobody was injured. There was another collision in which there were some fatalities.
Good, thank you.
Can I just give you one more piece of information?
No, sorry.
Okay.
Any more public comment? None? Okay, I want to bring it back. Mr. Beck, I think there were just a couple of questions that maybe need addressing. The trees close to the road, was that not part of the plan? I thought I read somewhere.
There are, there's opportunities to do that. Again, I think we're, I worry about starting over in Camp Andor's boxes, because a lot of the trees, especially trees in rural areas, are outside of our right-of-way. In particular, a lot of our rural roads are prescriptive in nature, which means we don't own the underlying rights, which means we have very limited ability to remove trees, except from immediately from the road and the road shoulder. So there may be trees that are literally three, four, five feet away, that we have no legal right to remove. It's a private property owner, it's a private property concern. And so we try to work with the private property. A lot of time, those trees are safe, and there's really not an issue, but that's one of the struggles we have, is we just don't have the legal right, and, you know, where do we go from there? You know, is it, it meets a standard, but it's a little closer than we like? What do we do? And so by and large, if there's a tree that's there, that's in the right-of-way, we do that all the time, we get a lot of requests from the public, we look at each and every tree. If a tree is dying, or is otherwise a hazard, we remove that tree. You know, some folks disagree with us.
Or it's a brush clearing?
Brush clearing, et cetera. So yeah, we do as much as we can within the guise of legality. We are limited somewhat by law, by the fact that we may not even own the property in which the tree is. And so that's a misnomer that I think some folks aren't aware of.
Okay. Lori talked about the roads going over to Tuolumne. Those are all Caltrans roads?
Yes, those are Caltrans roads, so go ahead.
So any questions or concern she has to contact Caltrans? They have a maintenance request on their website, like we do, so you could contact them. And the last was from the woman from Tuolumne. Are we going to, we can set our own speed limits?
No, I think she's referring to a program they're looking at. I've heard a little bit of this, about giving increased local authority to establish speed limits. It hasn't, you know, I've been kind of paying attention to it a little bit on the state side. It hasn't gathered much traction. I know our legislative representatives, despite the fact that a lot of times we want local control, I'm not sure that the local agencies want to have that local control. But again, it's something that I've seen a little bit. It hasn't had a lot of traction that I've seen, doesn't mean it won't occur. And they're always tinkering and changing, as, you know, since the speed rules, since I started doing speed limits about 23 years ago, the rules have changed about five or six times. They've been trending downwards, so they've been giving local agencies a little bit more control and authority to reduce speed limits, or I'm sorry, to do the opposite way. So they've actually been restricting us a little bit from our authority to, we used to have authority to reduce speed limits a little bit more than we used to. And so we've seen that, because the state's actually taking action opposite of what's happening. With that said, I shared some of the data about, we've seen some collision rates actually kind of steadying or dropping a little bit. And so, you know, I don't have any action beyond that, I don't have anything else to report, besides I've seen some literature on it.
Well, Chantel, Josh, I want to thank you very much. This is really strategic, and it's a great vision. And I'm sure I speak on behalf of the board how much we appreciate the work that went into this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, did you have something to go?
I'll make a motion to support the department's recommendation to adopt the LRSB.
Second it.
A motion by Mr. Stoppa, second by Mr. Mills. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes on a 5-0 vote. Oh, you voted, too? Passes on a 6-0 vote of the board.
It's been a long morning, I apologize, board.
You're going to have to become a resident of Calaveras County, sir.
Thank you.
Item 29 is from Human Resources, to adopt a resolution authorizing the new licensed psychiatric technician 1 to classification effective at board adoption.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. What I have before you today is a new classification of psychiatric technician series, and the justification for this position is, it will relieve the struggle of the department, especially the nursing staff. As you know, nurses have become the unicorns of their profession. We have a hard time recruiting nurses. When we do get them in, they're recruited away from us, by the hospitals, one right across the street from us. And so this classification will allow us to be able to better manage the medication management services of mental health, because the licensed... management services of mental health, because the licensed psychiatric technician will be able to assist in those services, and then allow the nursing staff to handle the higher skilled duties that they need to be performing. Now, we are not asking for an FTE. We would like to under, recruit for this position, and then underfill an existing position that they have open.
What does underrecruit mean?
And, well, we want to underfill. We want to recruit for the position, and then underfill an existing vacant position that they have.
Okay, thank you.
So, so that's how you're able to say that there will be no impact to the general fund, as you're underfilling a position while raising the salary on the other?
So, we are underfilling a, the psychiatric technician is actually a lower hourly rate than the nurse, and so, they, there would not be an impact to their budget.
Okay.
Judy, I thank you very much. I worked with PsychTechs a number of years ago. What do we, what exactly are you going to use the PsychTech for? How do that work? Is this in Department of Public Health? Is one of our public health nurses or physicians or?
This isn't within mental health.
Okay.
And so, they will help with the medication management duties, which is within their license.
Right.
And so, that the nurse can fulfill higher skilled duties within the department.
Okay.
This is, I don't see- So, this is something that they reached out to, so Health and Human Services reached out to their counterparts to see how they are managing the difficult recruitment of nurses, and how they are being successful in these areas, and this is one of them. And so, most of the counties do have this position within the department.
So, are we going to be eliminating that position in the next budget?
So, if we are successful in the recruitment, and we can get this position filled, yes.
Any comments or questions from the public? Bring it back to the board.
Do you have a motion?
I move this item, Mr. Chair. Madam Chair.
Second.
Mr. Chair.
I don't know what's in my water. Motion by Mr. Toffanelli, second by- Microphone, please. Oh, my God. That's your job. Motion by Mr. Toffanelli, a second by Mr. Stoppa. All in favor?
Aye.
So, move.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How did Josh feel?
Move to item 30.
Item 30 is from the Clerk of the Board of Supervisors. The appointment of applicants to serve on various committees, commissions, advisory boards, and county service areas. We have a number of vacancies with applications. The first is for Altaville Cemetery District, one vacancy for a term expiring 12/31/2021. An application was received from Carla Rolary. The next is for the Coppropola Cemetery District, one vacancy for a term expiring 12/31/2023. An application was received from Barbara Cheney, who is an incumbent. The Law Library Board of Trustees, one vacancy for a term expiring 12/31/2020. An application was received from Steve Salente, who is an incumbent. For the Resource Conservation District, one vacancy for a term expiring 12/31/2022. An application was received from Brady Dubois. On the Solid Waste Task Force, one vacancy for a term expiring 12/31/2023. An application was received from Sherry Rouge, who is an incumbent. The West Point Cemetery District, one vacancy for a term expiring 12/31/2023. An application was received from Judith Garcia, who is an incumbent.
Okay. Does supervisors have any comment they want to make on any of these? Does the public have any comment they want to make on any of these? Bring it back to the board.
Madam Chair, so moved.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Stoppa, second by Mr. Supervisor Toffanelli. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes on a 5-0 vote of the board.
Thank you.
Okay, want to move to item 30? Any board, oh, excuse me. I, I meant, excuse me. Any supervisor announcements on anything you'd like to address? I will, I have a CSAC meeting this week, and tomorrow, I am meeting with some people from Murphys Creek Theater. As you might know or not know, that's owned by the county. They want to put in a trailer. I said not. So, we're going to discuss what their options are tomorrow. Okay. Oh, and then Saturday, it's President's Weekend. If anyone would like to come and do some wine tasting, we welcome you to Murphys. Well, you know, that little town, just up from, just up from Vallesito. And there's a fundraiser Saturday night from Murphys Senior Center. None of the other supervisors have comments? Mr. Al, counsel, madam clerk? Okay, this meeting stands adjourned. Thank you.